This is a meeting of the City Council of the City of Southfield for September the 19th, conducted as a committee of the whole. Madam Clerk, would you please follow the roll?
Thank you. Mr. Mandelbaum?
Here.
Ms. Morris here. Mr. Chiesi?
Here.
Mr. Brightwell?
Yeah.
Ms. Seymour is outside, but she is here. Mr. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Granger?
Here.
Ms. Sitzman is present.
If there's no objection, I would like to amend our agenda a little bit. We have a visitor in our midst, our state representative, who would like to chat with us about a subject we talked about once before, and it's alcohol sales at gas stations. And the state has done some work on that, so Mr. Moss, if you take the stand?
Thank you very much, Council President, council members, mayor, staff, and residents. This is a timely topic about the legality or the restrictive hurdles to allow an SDM liquor license at a gas station. SDM is beer and wine. And so this, I spoke last Wednesday. I called our city administrator, who was at the MML conference along with our council members and our city clerk, and I gave kind of an overview of a bill that we were taking up in our Regulatory Reform Committee on which I serve, that was going to deal with the distribution of these SDM licenses in the gas stations. And I wanted to make sure that the city had a heads up. And since that time, we've had our committee hearing, and I have a little bit more information to share with council. So just to give a very brief history, earlier in this legislative session, the Regulatory Reform Committee took up House Bill 4895. And what 4895 did was it amended some of the hurdles for a gas station to acquire an SDM license. Right now, under current law, for a gas station to acquire an SDM license to sell beer and wine, there has to be a certain amount of distance from the point of sale at the cash register and the gas station itself. And on top of that, there has to be a $250,000 inventory requirement onsite in the gas station. So if it was a gas station kiosk, you know, that had a small little store in it, very likely they're not going to have $250,000 of inventory that does not include the gasoline and does not include the beer and wine. It would have to include, you know, food and other things within the store. So you would have to be a substantial-sized mart within a gas station in order to acquire this license. You'd have to be a freestanding business, an operation, that you wouldn't just pull up to the kiosk, go in and get your beer, and then hop right in your car. Now, as council very well knows, we have an ordinance against, that zones against, SDM licenses in gas stations, period. You know, I think that's done for several reasons in this particular community. We have an oversaturation at places where you can acquire beer and wine. We have a pretty thriving liquor store industry or businesses here in Southfield that would be in direct competition with gas stations. That is their main source of business. A gas station's main source of business is selling gasoline, so we didn't want the two to compete with one another. And I support the ordinance. So I had, so what this bill did, when it was before the committee, earlier in the session, is it made it so this inventory requirement, if you were a big-box store like a Meyer or a Kroger, and you owned a gas station on the property, the inventory requirement would be fulfilled just in the Meyer store or in the Kroger store itself. So I'll give you a concrete example. The gas station at 12 Mile and Evergreen Road, if Meyer acquired that gas station, I believe they're separate owners, it's not a Meyer gas station, then that Meyer could begin to sell beer and wine and not have to apply for a new license before the city council or the Liquor Control Commission, because their license, which they already sell beer and wine inside the Meyer, would just apply to the gas station. Wraparound our city ordinance. Or, you know, as Kroger might be looking to expand and put a gas station up at 12 Mile and Evergreen Road, that's another example. The inventory within that Kroger would count toward any future gas station that they would own on that site, and therefore they would not have to apply for an additional SDM license, and there would be no hurdles for them to sell beer and wine at that gas station. So that bill came through the House. I voted against it for numerous reasons, you know, not least of which is that we have an ordinance that basically would be overturned by this if we were to have a big-box store own a gas station and sell beer and wine. And it passed the House with bipartisan dissent and bipartisan approval, so it was not along party lines, and I voted against it. And then it passed in the Senate, and then it was signed into law by the governor. So now this is in operation. Now, to go back to the bill that we just heard of this last week, this, now, Senate Bill 929 continues the further allowance of gas stations that are not affiliated with a big-box store to sell beer and wine. So it eliminates that $250,000 inventory altogether. Instead, what it does is it implements a system by which, for every thousand people in your community, there would be one SDM license available. So in a community of over 70,000 like Southfield, there would be 70 SDM licenses available for gas stations or whomever, you know, to apply to the Liquor Control Commission and sell beer and wine. You know, that population threshold is so high that we have about, and I asked the clerk, and I think I did some rough counting myself, we have about 20 to 30 current SDM licenses. Imagine an additional 70 in our community, and who would apply for it? I don't need to drink a beer if I'm going to the cleaners, you know? And so it's like, you know, we already have a saturation of these licenses in this community. And so I asked the question in committee, I said, would our existing 20 to 30 be included within that 70 number? Nope, 20 to 30 are grandfathered in, it's an additional 70. Even worse is that there, if a gas station was denied an SDM license within the first 60 days of this bill's enactment, they automatically get an SDM license if they've been previously denied for inventory. So who knows how many in Southfield we have not been aware of that applied for a license to the state, didn't alert the city council, that would be getting an SDM license within the next 60 days, and then on top of that, 70 additional SDM licenses. So I really, this goes back to when I was on council, and we had a meeting of our Legislative Committee with the Liquor Control Commission. I know that Nancy was there, and Joan was there as well, and we, Mr. Sharette was there, and Sue, I think you were there as well. We have a continuing struggle with the Liquor Control Commission about our local control issues, and it never used to be this way. But the new composition of the Liquor Control Commission reads that the local municipality shall enforce their ordinance, or no, actually, the local, when making the decision, they shall consider the local ordinances before making a decision to grant a liquor license. That used to be really a hard line, you know? We will, if the local community doesn't allow you to do it, we're not going to issue it. Well, I said, you know, what does "shall enforce" mean? Well, or "shall consider" mean? Well, we shall consider it. I said, well, how many have you considered and still issued anyways? Well, then the answer was, well, the state has different rules, it's not our obligation to enforce local ordinances. So, you know, all in all, is if a local gas station attempts to apply for an SDM license, the Michigan Liquor Control Commission will consider our ordinance and then will issue the license to them. So I'm going to offer an amendment, this is coming up on Wednesday for a final vote in committee. It still has a long way to go until it gets to the full, the full House, it's already been passed through the Senate. I'm going to offer an amendment to strengthen local control, to make sure that they must follow all local ordinances applicable. And then I'm going to try and figure out if we can lower that population threshold, you know, or figure out how to adjust the population threshold, actually, strengthen the population threshold, so that in a community of 70,000-plus people, almost 80,000 people, there are not, you know, an additional 70 or 80 available SDM licenses in this community, which we can no longer, you know, we'll have to be on our own enforcing our local ordinance against that type of purchase and transaction at a gas station. So I'm, you know, I was really thankful that it just so happened that you all in the same, you know, I spoke with council member Brightwell, Mandelbaum, Clerk Fanks, and our city administrator, that you were all in the same room, so I could give you a preview of what was to come last Wednesday. This is the result, we'll see what happens on Wednesday with the vote. But I know, you know, it's unfortunate that I know our ordinances, you know, here in this community, and knew that this legislation was going to, you know, take a big turnaround and kind of create this loophole around something that we want to enforce here on the local level. So with that, that's the update.
Yeah. But Moss, let me ask you, that $250,000 inventory, now, is that waived in the gas stations that exist in their size today? In other words, is that still enforced?
That is still enforced, and so the liquor-
But not all the gas stations can have it, then?
That's still enforced, and Liquor Control Commission essentially said, you know, this is something that's difficult, we can't count all the Kit Kats and Diet Cokes and stuff. Well, that's your job, you know, that's, you know, then don't have that rule that we have to, we have to enforce our city ordinance, you should have to enforce your rules. So that's what their argument for lifting this $250,000 inventory requirement, because if you go into a gas station and say, there's no way that there's $250,000 of inventory here, and they're selling beer and wine, then they have to investigate that claim. So it is still in existence. This is, this is another way of capping SDM licenses while removing that inventory requirement.
See, a lot of them, a lot of them don't even pay personal property because the inventory is under $18,000 or $2,000, whatever, based on the personal property.
Yeah.
So they don't even pay a partial property tax.
Some of them too, you know, in order to get around this rule, which is in existence and is not meant to have a loophole, they'll buy $240,000 worth of stamps, so that they can have a roll of stamps inside the cash register as part of the inventory. But, you know, that's, all the more important why we have our local ordinance against it. There's no way to get around it on the gas station level, and there should be a respect for it on the state level of what we're trying to enforce here.
Any other questions, Ms. Banks?
Thank you for the update report, but is this just for gas stations? Could it also be dollar stores? Because we're starting, I'm seeing applications coming through for dollar stores or Dollar General, and I'm like, what are they going to start doing for SDM? So would they be included in this count?
As far as I know, you know, there's no inventory requirement for a dollar store or anything like that. This was particular to gas stations. So there, I don't think, and I can go back, I don't think there's anything stopping a dollar store right now from applying to the city, applying to the Liquor Control Commission of having a beer and wine license. Yeah.
Who are the only self-referents? A dollar?
A dollar. Jeremy, you may not be aware, but, you know, the Liquor Control Commission, they have changed the way that they are issuing licenses. And we did have a situation where we got notification, a gas station was approved, and we had to scramble and write a letter, like, we told them we had a local ordinance, and they're like, oh, well, and we wrote a letter, and it was a fight.
So my suggestion is, is that should there ever be, you know, a gas station that applies for this in the future, and obviously they now can, and there are no inventory restrictions, is, again, it's up to us to enforce our local ordinance. Unlike our friends at the DEQ, at least they're allowing us to enforce our ordinance, you know?
So nothing in here preempts the local?
Nothing preempts the local ordinance, but they are not taking, they shall consider the local ordinance when issuing the permit from the Liquor Control Commission for issuing a license, but they are not going to prevent a local community. Essentially, they want us here to be the bad guys, to absorb the cost of enforcement, you know, and then, you know, they're out of the picture.
But is that only for those people that start selling, maybe selling it without a license? If the Liquor Control Commission gives them a permit to sell wine and beer, doesn't that nullify our-
No, because ours is a zoning ordinance. If they sell beer and wine in a gas station, it's a nuisance per se, because it's a violation of the zoning ordinance. So ostensibly, we would go to subject court and say, you know, they're violating the zoning ordinance.
Right, and that's, and absorb the costs of doing that.
Get away from George.
So what I'm going to do is offer an amendment to flip that on its head and say, no, on the front end, you have to consider local ordinances, which we did for oil and gas, and they're still, I'm still waiting a result of that legislation to move forward. So I, the chairman of the Liquor Control Commission is Andy Deloney, that's who we met with a few years ago. I came right up to him after the meeting, and I said, you know, this is a perennial fight that you might have on this issue. Obviously, I'm hopeful to serve further in Lansing another term. I said, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to work with you on this issue, because this is a problem in my local community that over, essentially, it creates this loophole to overturn an ordinance. And so it's also a highlight, you know, to let council know, if one of these, you know, this all started with the big-box stores. If one of these big-box stores comes in for a gas station, just know what that all entails, you know, and just know that if they have an existing SDM license, that will expand, expand the floor plan of the, of the big-box store into the gas station. And that, they wouldn't even have to apply for a new license, that, because that would already be granted within the big-box store itself.
And that's in addition to all the party stores?
Right.
I mean, we'd have a, someone selling beer and wine about every 100 feet.
That's right. And so, you know, you have these communities of legislators, legislators that I serve with, that, you know, one, you know, one or two in a community of 1,000 people or 2,000 people, okay, maybe it's spread out over a larger area, makes sense. But when you look at a community like Southfield, where we would have an additional 70, in a community where we only have 30 now, or 20 now, and we have a lot of options to buy, you know, beer and wine here, that's, they did not take in consideration a densely populated community like ours. So I spoke out, and I'm going to try and make amendments to it, and I'll let you know if they're, if they're taken up. But this is, I mean, the political reality is, this is a priority, is that the bill sponsor of this bill is the Senate Majority Leader.
So who's pushing this?
Who's pushing this?
Lobbyists.
You know, and so it probably is somebody in the Senate Majority Leader's district, you know, that wanted to get an SDM license and didn't get one. So I really don't know, you know, necessarily, you know, what came out to get this drafted. But like I said, you know, this is Senator Mekoff's bill. It passed in the Senate unanimously. I, it will not even pass. You know, I raised, and it wasn't just me, and there were three members, or three or four members of the committee that had problems with it. I will be voting no on the committee vote unless some of my amendments are able to change it. And, you know, they're fast-tracking it, it could, you know, we'll have a committee vote this week, and we might take it up again, I would imagine, after and during the lame duck session. So we still have a little bit amount of time, but we got to figure out a way to change it quickly, and we were going to do that.
Mr. Cruz?
Yeah, Chairman, is there other, do you guys have hearings and things with this through committee that may be something that one or some of us could represent the city along with you to, you know, argue on our behalf?
You know what you could do tonight is, you could, this would require a Rule 10, council president's favorite, if you wanted to pass-
I've got the scars to prove, but we do a real thing.
I wasn't going to bring it up, I know it's a sore subject. You could pass a resolution against SB 929 in its current form, and then we obviously, we have a lobbyist, GCSI, Bill Zagman, and he can come to the committee and submit a card on behalf of this community against this legislation. That could be something that could be done tonight, you know, and I could take that with me to committee on Wednesday. So at least that the community is on the record of having concerns about it. So if you wanted, if that could be passed, we could, we could, you know, further tweak and draft it, so that you could have something that I could bring up to the attention of the committee, and then also, you know, we have a, we have a lobbying arm for the city in Lansing that could bring it to their attention as well.
Any other comments? You said that you wanted to strengthen the population requirement. I think for Class C, it's 1,500, isn't it?
That sounds about right.
I think you're correct. I think you're correct.
So if you, at least get it even with a Class E, it would be a little bit better.
Right, right, that's true. I mean, I was thinking, you know, one for every million residents, but, you know, that might be a little bit too far-fetched, so. But yeah, no, that's, that's something I'm looking at, but we're definitely going to put in real strengthening language about must-consider instead of shall-consider, because, you know, how many times shall they consider an ordinance and still, and still issue a license anyways?
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, to be continued. Thank you, council.
Ms. Seymour has negotiated some pizza delivery to taste, if someone wants a-
How did that negotiate, they offered?
Well, you were in the way, so.
Is it so?
I give you credit for negotiating, it's perfect, pretty good negotiator. Before we, before we go on, there's a statement that I want to read. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use threatening or abusive lightheartedly when addressing the city council. Public comment with a public hearing, within a public hearing, must directly relate to the matter which is the subject of the public hearing. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person or addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of a public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. Okay? Let's move into our agenda.
Before I give you the presentation we had, if I represent the council, I would like to at least see what the council felt about that recommendation of a resolution.
I was going to put that down on any other items.
You will put it down. Oh, yeah. Okay.
Can I just, sorry, I'm speaking from the audience, make a suggestion, just to include as currently drafted or as currently written? Because if there are some amendments that are adopted, you know, if local control is given back to us, then, you know, we would have our local control, and maybe I wouldn't be so, you know, opposed to it, because it wouldn't impact our community. But, so as currently drafted is probably the best language to use.
Okay, back to Mr. Cruz. Let's find out if, at least just find out if people have a flavor for doing it. We'll take up the action at the end of the meeting, so just find out if people are interested in it.
I know.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Ferguson?
Yeah.
Okay. All right? We'll take that up at the end of our agenda. All right? Mr. Crowe, do you have the presentation of the final city center site redevelopment plan?
Good evening. Just as a little background, you might recall that the city went out for a request for proposal for a professional development team to come up with a vision concept plan for our 8.15 acres across the street, formerly known as Pomeroy Site. That was done at the end of last year. Hamilton Anderson was the successful candidate team that went, that was vetted by our purchasing department. They came on board around February and started several workshops and key stakeholder meetings throughout the summer. They've been before council a few times. And tonight, they're here to present their final concept vision for the site. We'll talk a little bit about next steps after they receive feedback, but ultimately, we would bring back a vision plan to be adopted by council and to be utilized for a request for development. And we would use that to go out and identify brokers or developers to actually start the implementation of the concept plan. So with that, we have Amy Chesterton, who's the planning director for Hamilton Anderson, and she'll be leading the presentation tonight. We also have Bob Gibbs from Gibbs Planning Group, who worked on the marketing study. He also will be here to present and answer questions from council. And I will also be available at the end of the presentation, answer any questions about next steps, or anything that the council has regarding this vision concept plan. That will turn it over to you, Amy.
If you could give us your name and business address for the record?
Good evening. Amy Chesterton with Hamilton Anderson, 1435 Randall, in the fair city of Detroit, Michigan. Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
Good to see you again. So we're just going to do this.
It's all working fine with the town.
That's okay.
I'll try rebooting if you want to get started.
Okay. So I have a, again, thank you again, and we appreciate the privilege for being here. I think for the most part, and this might turn out to be a happy accident, because we can skip a lot of the preamble. I think everyone is very well versed on the merits of walkable urbanism, everything that we are, I think, as a, as a group, we've moved forward, and I think we've come to a consensus that that's something that we're going to build. On the site, large contiguous city-owned properties are rare in communities that are built out such as yours, so again, this is a tremendous opportunity. And as Terry mentioned, the end, while we're going to create a vision, we put together some, I think, pretty beautiful renderings that kind of, that sort of describe the environment and the product that you'd like to, that you'd like to create. Bob can talk a little bit more about the market study, but I think we've come to you and talked, talked to you about those the last couple of times, about what's the market demand? What do we hope that we could possibly build here in a realistic, from a realistic economic environment? The end, the end game here is that we're doing all this to take one giant step backwards. You are then going to do an RFQ for qualifications to qualify development teams, and they are going to come back to you with what their design is. But your group was, but you guys were smart enough to get together and create a vision first, so you can say, hey, Mr. Developer, this is exactly what we want, so the developer doesn't have to play guess what, a game of guess what I'm thinking with you guys. So that's where we are. And so I will forward through a lot of these things, we've talked about these, but again, understanding this market capacity. And Bob is probably going to chime in towards the end as we talk about the next steps, and as you release this request for qualifications, and followed by the request for proposals. But again, this, just over eight-acre site, as we talked about before, can support 184,000 square feet of retail, 250,000 units of residential. But again, that all exists within this walkable mixed-use development. We've talked about this. What do these walkable places have? Again, I'll, I'll fast-forward a lot of this stuff, because we know about that now. We know how good sites out-produce, single-story and single-use sites, two to one, and you guys are already building on that. And again, Terry, congratulations. Is it, is your award a secret? The ASLA award, this is pretty-
None of them are.
It's a pretty big deal, especially for a suburban community to get something like that, so congratulations. And the market potential for, what does that mean, in 184,000 square feet of retail? It can break down into 24 to 35 retail stores, 11 to 15 restaurants, and, and the breakdown. And again, I won't dwell on this, because we've talked about it several times before, but just in case if there's anybody that, that wasn't here, please stop me if I'm going through too quickly. So again, we sort of tongue-in-cheek talked about the sort of evolution of shopping centers and how we want to move on from sort of caveman-type development, and instead of just sole use, if you have this tremendous opportunity right across the street from your, from your municipal complex, what can happen there? You could do just a basic strip mall with single outbuildings. You could do something that has a little bit of sense of place to it, that has a handful of placemaking. You could do something that has more robust placemaking and, and programming as well. And you could start to do something, it could add even further when they have outbuildings start to touch the street. Or we could do something that's very robust, that's mixed-use, walkable, and, and connects to the surrounding areas. So we talked about that, sort of had fun with that last time. With the visual preference survey that we did with the stakeholder group, I think we talked about that a lot as well. Folks here are very interested in outdoor dining, multiple storefronts. From a residential standpoint, people are looking for residential over ground-floor commercial. More office opportunities that are probably in some different environments that aren't offered currently in Southfield. Open space, movable tables and chairs, innovative art and seating, you've already set a precedent for- You've already set a precedent for art here in Southfield. And the things that you're not looking for is a little bit of, basically more of the same. I think what we have here is good, but we, for the most part, the stakeholders, the stakeholders that showed up are ready to try something new. We came to you last time with a vision that looked something like this, but it was a little bit, a little bit more dumbed down. What we started to set up, and I'm going to walk through this in pretty great detail. What we started to set up was this notion of you have Evergreen Road and sort of this new road. And we'll talk about it a little bit, but what we have here is a terminus and sightline that really lines up very beautifully with your municipal complex and what could possibly be infilled around this complex someday in the future should you choose to take advantage of that as well. We have a large hotel potentially, parking, other facilities, I'll go into more detail on the backside. And then we have two flanked on either side by two mixed-use buildings as well. One, the primary first-floor user would be some sort of a grocery store. Again, if you choose to do that. The other is mixed inline retail with parking. Both of these two complexes have residential on top and the possibility for a hotel, a hotel at the terminus. And again, Bob told you guys a lot about the opportunities for a hotel in this site, that it could be quite favorable depending on how it's developed. And so again, what we tried to do with this opportunity was with all the stakeholder input, really help you craft a vision when you go out to the developers. You say, this is what we would like you to build, Mr. Developer, not that, this, not that. And so we'll walk through this a little bit. We do still have two concepts. We have one concept, as you see, you might notice that we took some liberties with your property. This is not part of the 8.15 acres. This is an existing out parcel, but we do have some pretty good ideas in our back pocket should we stay within the confines of the exact acreage. So in this concept that you just saw here, we did sort of square off that property, or we can talk more about that in detail if you want to. So we have, again, we know where we are, City Hall, we have the green, and we have the former site. Here's your proposed Arbor Lofts across the street, the 5,000 Tower. And again, what we did, we started to tee it up. I'm not sure if that's reading well or not, but we started to tee it up for future opportunities, but we thought that it was pretty important to obviously honor what's across the street at City Hall. And then you start to see the way, this is just the primary function of this site plan. You essentially have three basic buildings, and I'll walk through how those are parked. Again, this is this public open space that we've talked time to time again about. This will be more of a programmed, park-like space, very activated by retail. And we had fun at the last meeting talking about what we don't do and don't want in there. We'll have the opportunities when that thing's built to really walk through what happens there. Again, here is the, what we're referring more to as the grocery store block and then the inline retail block. So let's walk through this a little bit. Does anybody have questions so far? I'm trying to breeze through because I know we've been through a lot of this preamble before.
Ms. Seymour, have you?
Well, I have a comment about the way it looks.
Mm-hmm. That's okay.
My concern was, it makes, I don't mean to insult anybody, but it makes me think of downtown Detroit. It's just straight streets with shops and, you know, office buildings. I was hoping that we could have something with a little more ambiance, something like the head on Partridge Creek or, you know, where you could kind of meander and come around the corner and be surprised about the stores that are there. Something that would be not so rigid, but more.
Okay. Well, I think what we're going to, and actually, I'm really glad you raised this question now because this is an important concept. The mechanics of how the developer responds to your RFP are important. You want there to be active first-floor retail. You want there to be open space. You want there to be structured parking. The skin, the design, the actual architectural skin, how that's put together, that's completely going to be up to the developer and the architectural team that responds. So there'll still be a lot more input for that.
You still have this all the same stuff, but it's just something so you can kind of meander instead of like straight streets. That's what, to me, is missing. You don't have this, you have a surprise around the corner.
Well, we're going to get to, let's, when we get to the very end, we have a couple more renderings that I think you'll show.
I understand.
I do. I do. I think you might, I'd like to talk through that a little bit more when we get to the end, but do know, I think it's an important point that she brought up, is that the actual skin, the architectural style, whether or not it's red brick or cordon panels, or that's much later. We just put some renderings out there so people could get a feel for it, for what's going on there.
Excuse me, but I don't mean to finish with the brick or anything.
You're talking about the sheer geometric layout that it's going from here to here. Yeah, a lot of that is coming from the fact that we're really trying to put back in an urban framework.
A lot in there.
Yeah. Yeah. And that we did see an opportunity to do a lot of, like, for instance, I think you mentioned, there was a lifestyle center, you mentioned.
Partridge.
Oh, Partridge Creek. Yeah, that's, I mean, acres upon acres upon acres and the.
There's something like that to where it just, you got part of a sense of, you know, kind of come around this corner and be surprised about what's there. Just it's more intriguing, more ambient, to me. That's what I'd like to see, some of that.
Okay.
And I understand why you're kind of using, here, the buying space, I get that.
Okay. Okay. Well, let's get through it and then we'll talk, and we'll talk through a little bit more of the design details in a minute. So again, we started to talk about this last time. The, again, about 150 or less from sort of the total retail restaurant, that can all happen. What you see here is where we're intending, where you see this red, that's intended to be active first-floor retail. That's where you can come and go through a shop. There's something to see in a window, et cetera. We have a couple, what we'll call a little bit more dead or more quiet zones, and I'm going to talk as we go through it, how we would expect the developer would overcome that. Not every street is going to be active, and we're going to talk about that. So I want to just remind me to get back to that. We have a hotel room with approximately 125 keys. Again, this is all within the realm of what's realistically financially economically possible in this built environment. The one thing that I, as we started to work this out from a footprint, we did have what we're sort of calling our 30,000 square feet of flex space. This could be many things. If you have a more of a boutique hotelier that really isn't interested in the banquet game, that they, we do see potential for banquet opportunity, especially in this environment, they could take this up with some sort of banquet facility. The corridors, the service corridors work very well with this length. But if that's not something that's of interest to your developer, this could be many things. This is an excellent location for an art center. It's an excellent location for some sort of large office complex. There's basically flex in the program and the way we worked it out, that you can really offer a lot of opportunity to a developer. We have parking, lots of parking. We have parking in a deck that is at the, I'm trying to think, at the north, at the northwest corner. We have sort of podium parking that's directly adjacent to the grocery store. We have parking on a podium that's at this corner that's all, and we'll talk about how that is screened. And then we have on-street parallel parking throughout the interior of these sort of new streets that are created by the development. And now we're sort of just taking an axon. This is the proposed Arbor Lofts in the background. When we talk about that retail and restaurant, we have square footage for, at minimum, two large-scale restaurants. We know that there's, the folks in the stakeholder group desperately want some really good restaurants, a place where they can sit down and get a menu. And we think that that's probably possible in this built environment, in this walkable urban environment, that you'd be very, you'd be set up pretty well to be competitive to get some of those if this environment is created. We have all along the first floor of these new streets that we're creating, the sort of more inline retailers. The grocery anchor is part of that retail. And again, going back to that 130 to, up to 145 square feet. The grocery store, one of the things that, and again, that could be on the corner, they're probably going to demand an address on Evergreen Road, so that would probably be on the corner. One of the, we talked a little bit last time about sort of this new, more small format grocery store. We're seeing a ton of them applying and sniffing around downtown Detroit as well. And some recent ones, it's not just in big cities, the recent one was just built in Columbus, Ohio. I think Bob talked a lot about Fresh Time as one of these new retailers that's springing up all over the Midwest.
Downtown Farmington.
And downtown Farmington Hills. Papa Joe's is at about 30,000. The Kroger at Main and Vine at 27. Your Westborne Market on the west side of the city at 25,000. Whole Foods in Detroit at 21,000. And Trader Joe's, I mean, they could fit a shoebox these days. They go just about anywhere. And those really do act as serious anchors. It's not a small, it's not a small act. So just wanted to talk to you a little bit about some precedents of the grocery stores that are happening around the area. And again, that's sort of, again, however we work it out, but they're probably going to demand an address on Evergreen, so that's probably where that would go. The inline retail, the, you guys all have a copy of the market study. We can talk more, about more detail about how that works, but it's probably really going to be more about your anchor, your developer's anchor, and then the retailers that would come with that anchor. Anything else I should say about inline retail, you think?
Yeah, it'll be cafes and coffee shops and specialty retail stores.
And then we just, I talked a little bit about the restaurants. Again, limited service evenings, so sort of like your fast casual, and then all the way to full-service restaurants, bars, brew pubs, et cetera. If they can get a liquor license, they can have the brew pub, hopefully not the 25, 250,000 square feet. Specialty food service. And then residential. We have proposed, at least in this plan, and you could go up as high as you could park it depending on what your comfort level is, but we baked in three, anywhere from three, three to three and a half above the retail and story height to get you 150 residential units. And that has, we'll talk a little bit about in the open space, but those are flanked on the use on either side so that the residents have views down into the park. They have views into this new street that's going to be created that overlooks the hotel and then frontages on Evergreen Road. And those could range anywhere from 400, so almost a little micro unit, up to 700, 1,700 square feet. Again, and they can be whatever you want. That's basically how we ran the math as far as when we were figuring out that 150 units. They could be rental and they could be for-sale condos depending on how you want to do your land lease when you do that building. Yeah.
Can you go back?
Sure.
So some of the residents will have views of the rooftop?
Yes. And we'll talk a little bit about that rooftop. Depending on how, so, and again, I don't want to go into too much detail of the architectural because it'll probably be different when you do yours, but the way we worked the math is that if you picture you running a center line down the center of this thing and consider that a corridor, that you have some units that front the front and some units that front the back, just a typical corridor, and you've got apartments on either side or condos on either side depending on how you have it. So some would have views of the street and some would have views of the rooftop gardens. And we'll talk about what that means in one second. The hotel, again, we think that there's probably tremendous opportunity if this environment is built for a boutique hotel. It's just so well positioned, your community is so well positioned, that we think that there's a lot of opportunity for that to happen. That also gave us an interesting opportunity if we're going to sort of tee up this axis, which we think, we think, depending on how you work out the design, is a really important requirement part of the RFP, that they understand that spine, that they understand that connection to your municipal facility. An opportunity to create sort of a Galleria or pass-through that then opens you up onto Central Park Boulevard. That's a lot of opportunity there for that to happen. And that hotel could have a ground floor, lobby, cafe, et cetera. But again, lots of opportunities to put into the RFP. I talked a little bit about that flex space, whatever it may be, art center, and BOH is just architectural, hospitality lingo for back-of-house, you know, where does the kitchen go? Where does the, where do you store your laundry, et cetera? That's pretty generous for a hotel of this size, so your flex space could be ultimately just about anything you would want to market or anything you would agree your developer to do. Multipurpose rooms, breakout space. And with the infrastructure that you've put in on Central Park and what you're teeing up across the street with Arbor Lofts, that could be a really nice environment on that corner. Open space. So of course, there's this park, this public park that we've talked about at the last handful of meetings. I think everybody has an idea of what that'll look like. We'll show you a couple of renderings and some precedent images. And on top of the parking in both of these use, these are great opportunities for potential rooftop decks. That could be amenity space for the residents. It could be simply green roof from an environmental standpoint to collect rainwater and simply something for the residents to look down on for those that are on the back side of the corridor of that, of those residential units that we talked about. And again, the open space is, quite frankly, critical for this to happen, for this to be something other than just another strip center. It's important for this to be, for this to be part of the city, working through a public-private partnership and talking through negotiations with the developer. Talked a little bit about that, what that rooftop amenity might look like and parking. So parking, everybody's favorite topic. One of the things that, so we have, and again, this deck can pretty much wax and wane however your need desires, but we probably don't want to go too much higher because we want to keep, maintain views out the backside of the hotel. This deck could accommodate at five levels, 850 spaces. We have a covered garage over here for the, directly adjacent for the grocery, anywhere from 55 to 70 spaces. We have a covered garage on this side that would be 65 to 70 spaces and then 80 spaces that would be metered, and we can talk a little bit about why metered if you care, basically to get turnover around the new streets that were going to be created with a total of a little over 1,050 spaces. We went through your zoning to take a look on how that works from the proposed. It would supply, it would supply what you would ultimately require. And then from a parking standpoint, we can talk a little bit about it, but there's lots of methods. One thing, I do want to be really clear on something. What you see here is essentially, might as well be out of a 1950's spaghetti western, this is a false front. So what we're doing is creating some sort of a way for the residents in here to get some sort of privacy and then also to shield a lot of what's happening on the first floor, which is essentially parking. If you recall, I talked, there are some dead zones, some dead spaces where you don't have active first-floor retail. So that's something that would be important. And then we also have a little bit of that happening as far as a facade front on that part of the, and there's lots of ways to, from an architectural standpoint, to kind of do those tricks to cover up the parking. This particular rendering is a view at your south, south, yeah, well, at your south, yeah, you just call them the south and the roundabout, right? Okay. So this is your south roundabout. This would be a view of the one that's primarily inline retail with residential. This is a little bit of that frontage that I talked about. And again, the architectural skin is totally up to you. Our particular firm just has a propensity for the modern, so you can, the form is the form. We're just working with local preferences. You can kind of see a little bit of the University of Phoenix building in the background, the tower to the left, and you can kind of see the way that it responds to gratitude, the way the building sets up, and the way you really start to get more of a walkable front happening on Evergreen. We know that in the next probably handful of years, Evergreen is not going to be, you know, lined with retail. We get that. We understand that, which is why it's pretty important the way we tee this up to really kind of bring in a lot of that more active first-floor retail into the, into the park space.
That would respect a false front. I did have a question once you brought it down on the city council.
Yeah.
In the false front, this rendition here, scene indicated, it looks nicer than the fresh flat.
Yeah, that, this slide is just NASA to tell you the mechanics of how the buildings get put together. Yeah.
Okay, so the false front will be inviting, so to speak?
Yeah. And again, it's designed, however you want it to be designed, but we think in order for it to happen, you wouldn't want that. You'd want it to look like it's part of the building.
Yeah, that looks more, you know, more tuned to the environment.
Yeah.
Especially at the high level as you're walking.
Because of that, it looks just like, just a wall. Because though, that, it looks just like, just a wall.
Yeah.
But here, it looks more, you know, inviting and tuned to the environment.
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, responding to, you've put tremendous investment in this infrastructure, and responding to the roundabouts, responding to what's already there. We took a lot of time to make sure that what you ultimately require the developers is sensitive to that and responds to that. This is a bird's-eye view, and let me just take you back. Right now, the view that I'm going to show you would be, you're in the hotel, in your lovely, modern, super cool new hotel that nobody can get a reservation at, and you are looking out.
Eastward towards City Hall.
You're looking out, and here's City Hall in the background, so you're looking out on one of the rooftop patios, and here's your port-cochere for the drop-off. But what's important about this space, and again, if you don't like the skin, that's fine. What's important about this space, I think, is the public space. We have one, we have room for, and again, we've got room for lots of things in this public space, but one, one small kiosk that if this is city-run, or if you, you know, have some sort of authority that ultimately runs that, could have a coffee shop, have something in there for your activities, your event that you just had, could be over here across the street. But what's important about this is that it starts to tee up this direction, this directional access, between what's happening here and across the street. You have first-floor frontages, you have all of the residential, and what's happening in the daytime, and then what could be at nighttime. This particular view is essentially taken just across the street on Evergreen Road, so your back would sort of be to the green right now, and you're looking back into the public space, into a potential atrium, should the hotelier decide to build such a thing, and then all of the activities, splash pads, art, et cetera. We did, you know, pick up on some of the orange that you have going on there. However, the art is ultimately.
Yeah, remember, if you were standing at the mid-block crossing, this lines up, this is right on that east-west axis.
So you would essentially be standing about here, looking into, looking into your new public space. So I think where we are right now, and then we talked, we'll talk a little bit how we get there, and then, you know, obviously, we talked last time about precedence for other communities. Are they advocate, partner, developer? How do you, you know, what's your skin in the game for this? What are all the mechanics that are going to be in place for how you create your RFQ and then subsequent RFP? But I didn't want to stop the discussion without saying, if we don't, if we don't work with a totally squared-up opportunity, we still have, all of the numbers work from a parking standpoint, and we can still create essentially the same access and the same views and the same park space, utilizing a little bit less of the, of the total property. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that that's not necessary for this to get done.
Do you have to scale down any of the buildings that already make that?
Oh, yeah. It's, it's significant, it's less, but we could get a lot of the, we could, we started to work on the residential, we'd just go taller, and this parking garage is going to have, it will, will go taller, but it's doable, it's definitely doable, and we can dig into that a little bit more if we want to go, if we want to go that option. So, let me, let me stop here with questions. I know I just threw a lot at you guys.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yeah. The thing that bothers me, to go back to your blogs, right there, yes, and, and I guess the director to you, I know, my concern was that if this is not just a vacant lot that needs to be developed, it's something that is supposed to, to make everything else blossom around it. And when you look at, at the parking deck on Central Park Boulevard, it almost like a wall between everything that is west of that. Instead of bringing in, they just approved all, how many apartments on that, that piece the other day, those individuals who, who are living there are going to filtrate, try to get into the activities on, to the east. That looks like a wall. It, it, I mean, just like I mentioned when we started out, was that, that everything around it was, was planned years ago as one big development. And because it was cut up into pieces, that's just the way it looks today. It's cut up into its individual parcels. And since the city, and I was one of the encourage the buying of that, this was supposed to set a tone where people make the other people spread out and be part of it. Whether you had, you know, that many buildings on that one spot was not really the answer to make itself sufficient, it was to make the rest of it explode. And, and I don't see that. I just, I see a compound where everything sits within that area and, and, but, Terry, they wish you would bring it once in a while to the city. The roadway that goes west, you know, when you look at a site plan, all the, all the things that you're after should be in it and be part of it, how you have access to the adjacent properties, and, and what effect does this have on the adjacent properties? What would you like to see on the adjacent properties? And, and it just seems to me that this is looking at, at a parcel that anybody would own and come to the city and say, I'd like to develop my parcel. Well, of course, they're going to build it to the maximum, they really don't care what is around it. But this is now city-owned, and I thought the city owning it would make the others wake up and start participating, you know, in making that what it's supposed to be, the city center. And, and like you said, you go back to 1997, when they did the first drawing of that, you know, it was talking about the whole area, how the road network goes, with the possibility of bringing up water from the, from the lower drain at the Evans ditch, it comes up from there, making a water area, you know, making it the whole, the thing, including the front lawn of City Hall.
Yeah, I, I'm going to jump in first.
Okay.
And we try to respect the fact, and that's why I think the design picks up on the east-west axis, and it really engages.
It doesn't go through.
When you, when you walk out of City Hall, there's the potential to continue that green space. Can you go back to?
Bear with me, everybody, sorry. We're going to go on another, your little journey here on the other side. Well, let's just, do you want the?
One with the atrium. There it is. So you could see, we kind of shadowed in future development. And then, so this is the, the main public space, but it runs directly.
It ends in a wall.
No, if you could just clear me up. It comes right across from City Hall. You can literally walk out of City Hall, you would walk across this green space, cross the mid-block crossing, engage into this park. And one of the key things that I challenged our development team is, this is a glass atrium that's covered, but you can see through all the way to Arbor Lofts, so that we don't lose that access. It invites you in through the space and then out to the door. And conversely, anybody that's at Arbor Lofts would enter through the, a glass atrium, through the Galleria, and then they would enter out into that, the rendering that she showed you from rooftop, all the way to City Hall. And so that whole access engages all the adjacent properties.
You don't get it, Terry, what I'm trying to say, but the, the character of what we have allowed in the lofts doesn't, doesn't fit into this piece, and this piece doesn't fit into that piece. It is just two different people who look at their island and develop this island and this island, and, and there's nothing that brings them together, nothing that brings them together. An atrium would not bring necessarily the people from the lofts, unless something at the lofts would direct them into that area.
And as I had mentioned before, with the lofts, you have three-story building that are built close to the road, start to create a street wall for pedestrians. This does the same thing. And it's really that, that center, that center spine is going to act as the catalyst that brings all the adjacent properties, and it's the programming of that space is going to bring all the adjacent properties to that space. You can easily walk, there's no, there's no space where, even with the garage, the ground level would have a skin on it that's engaging in its pedestrian friendly. So you're always, as a pedestrian, as you travel from the towers, as you travel from all the adjacent spaces, it's an inviting environment that brings you in, no different than a walkable downtown.
See, the difference is, the difference is, Terry, that this one piece is your downtown. And, and the downtown should be the entire civic city center deal.
I don't disagree, this is a starting point.
This is, when you talk about the parking deck, sitting on this piece of less than nine acres of ground, you're talking about pretty close to what, $15,000 to $20,000 of space? I mean, some guy comes in and wants to develop that, and you tell him, build a parking deck, you know what he's going to have to give for rent for, for all that parking space that you have there? And the other, and the other square footage that you have, you've got 184 square feet of, of retail, I think, Bob, isn't it? 184, yeah. And then you're showing grocery stores at 25,000 to 30,000 square feet, you know, I mean, I mean, it just, go ahead, Bob.
Can I say a couple of things? The, I was there when they planned the project, and unfortunately, the site is mostly surrounded by parking lots. It's got large buildings that are surrounded by parking lots that are not that walkable. So the first thing they did was, they said, okay, there's a building here, there's a building here, let's immediately put a street through here to connect these buildings. This was very deliberate. So when you're on this building, you'll be able to walk right through a street, and the lofts will be able to walk right through a street, and maybe this could be opened up more. But the idea was, this whole grid was laid out with the surrounding buildings. This street is here because there's a building here and there's a building here. We didn't want.
5,000 is on that corner by your left hand.
Yeah.
Yeah, right there, come this way a little bit left, right.
Right here. That's the area.
Yeah, it's 5,000, come center.
Yeah, we can go back to the plan, it's actually lined up.
But we wanted to, go to the aerial. We want, we have, here's the building, there's a building here, there's a building here, the University of Phoenix. So the, the first thing they said was, let's connect to the surrounding buildings, but not to the parking lots, because we think those parking lots will eventually be filled in. So this street was designed, luckily, these two buildings are across from each other, and it was, and then this lofts and the City Hall were there, so the square that Amy's recommending is right at the crosshairs of the buildings around it. That's the best they could do. They did not deliberately want to line up with the parking lots. I think, you're talking about the economic feasibility of this, and I think you brought up a really good point. You may want to consider another phase, where you actually put together, we actually put together a perform-up, to see what would this cost, what kind of return would the developer get? And that will help you back into land values, what is this site worth, how much do you sell it or ground lease it for? And then also, it would tell you what kind of property tax revenue you can expect out of this development. So it will give you good ammunition when you go out to bid, because you'll be able to estimate what the developers are going to get for rate of return, you'll be able to fairly value the property, and you'll get a sense whether this gives a good return in freight or SEVs to the city. And that might be another phase you consider going.
But that doesn't necessarily need to be the end-all. It was really that, with a starting point, knowing what the ask is from the developer. A lot of communities have decided that regardless of what that answer is, they still want to stop building the way they've been building, and they're very committed to their city centers, and there's many other mechanisms that they've gone forward with in order to issue those. So, you know, be it, you know, straight, issuing just straight-up bonds, you know, however that's important to you, community, or, or, or split the difference, understanding. But Bob recommending that first step is very important. I just wanted to round out the critique of the, of the design based on not responding to anything around it. I think Terry talked, I think we've all talked about the axes and how the reality is that there's, there's a lot of streets here that, right now, nobody wants to walk on. There really isn't anything that's going to give somebody some, a reason to walk. And we talked very early on about, we do have some winners and some losers in this plan as far as active first-floor streets. Probably the only reason that there's, you're feeling not a lot of love for Central Park Boulevard is simply because we didn't do a rendering for it. There's a lot of ways, as Terry mentioned, that we can skin this deck. You could also, while I don't think it's financially viable or economically viable to put first-floor retail liner on there, you could also do that as well, and nothing would be more responsive to your planned units at the Arbor Lofts. It's simply just from the approach that, that we planned the design, but it is ultimately part of what was, you know, important to the overall design of the project.
Mr. Randwell?
Yeah. Just for us, if we meditated that fair grocery, grocery, and you can, you can add the opposite. We don't necessarily own all that land, but if, that the existing.
Yeah, yeah, so let's, the difference between one plan and the other.
Right there.
So, yeah, here would be another version, so this is a current strip that you have here. You don't own that. So we took some liberties with that, with that plan, so this is existing. So the grocery store, if that would still be the chosen anchor, would flop, would flip-flop over here, if that's.
It is more realistic, so we don't, since we don't have control of the.
I think that's totally up to you, yeah. I think that's totally.
I can, I can mention that we met with Ekin, who owns the developer. This is their carrot, okay? When they met with us, they want to make their office building more viable.
Right.
So they asked us to consider extending the parking garage northward, so they could tie into it, which makes their property more valuable. And, and part of make, possibly the trade off is this parcel. Now, I know the mayor, and I heard the comments from Mr. Ekin years ago, that they built it as a throwaway building, at the time, meaning that, hey, we're, we're doing this as a first-floor retail until something better comes along. But certainly, if something better comes along, we would definitely consider it. Now, you know, and I don't know if anyone from Ekin's here, but they.
We reminded him of that.
Yeah, they want you to believe that's the most profitable center in their portfolio, obviously. But, but the carrot was, they were really interested in working with the city. If, if the shared, if the parking garage that gets built, you know, they would, they would help, that might be some, one of the partners that says, we're willing to lease 100 spaces. Also, the developer that you work with may just buy that on their own. I don't think the city has to buy that parcel.
Okay. Okay, then, of course, I saw.
Yeah, you don't need to go out for too much of that.
So what we said is, yeah, we want to respect the fact that we don't own it now, but if we're really looking at a long-term vision, doesn't it make sense for all of us, this will make their property much more valuable, everybody around it? Because now it's, there's a, there's an active center for people to go to. His office workers can take advantage of the programming that Parks and Rec is, you know, maybe doing here and so forth, right?
I'm looking to hear you guys discuss that, because I'm sitting here looking at it. This might consider this, and so you guys have discussions that are, that I'm not particular of.
Yeah.
Anyway, so that, that is in the works, and that, the whole site is, there's potential for the whole site, with, with the existing.
And if we talked about facing, right? We think that this corner is the most viable corner, would probably be developed first, and hopefully, it's in conjunction with some public-private partnership that creates the public space, which in itself will be an attractor to the rest of this. This will probably is a little more long-term. This, this is the prime, the prime corner. This is our main, main, of the air.
All right, go on. Go straight to the, to the result, you go to our Q, and they will educate each of us who's qualified to actually build this, and they'll be, they will come back to us with respect to what's doable and what's representative of what our desires are.
Yeah, I think it's, and that's probably something that you would want to, they'll be able. be a lot of crafting around that. There's been a lot of careful consideration about how you go public with it. I think that there's probably, and Bob, if you've got any other ideas, let me know, but I think there's a little bit of chicken in the egg happening. Because you want, when you do the RFQ, you want them to know that you've been through this process. This isn't just this property you're throwing out there. So you're probably going to announce that you're going to publicize it. You're also going to talk about your vision statement, et cetera. Put all your stats out there. Put Bob's study as a precursor to what's happening with the RFQ, really talking about that. And then you're going to have your list of requirements for your proposal.
I would say, if you think about a week ago, we talked about a similar approach with Northland. And Northland's one hundred and twenty acres, and it's probably multiple developers. This one could be one developer, or it could be a partnership with a couple of developers, one who does housing, another one that does retail. And then there might be the partnerships with some existing, you know, existing businesses and owners registered in the city.
I think this will precipitate the surrounding developments to invest. I think you're going to see these surface parking lots get reinvested in terms of the buildings.
Sure. Now, Bob's study would be a key to the standpoint that they have a mass here that can support local and suburban, and that's the best way. And this is the best vehicle we have right now with respect to plans and how long-term that will be.
Yeah, and if you remember, this is not five single-pad, one-story drive-through restaurants, right? We talked about walkability. We talked about wanting a place for family and activities. This builds on all the assets that we've been working on with Evergreen Road and with some of the other development that's happening. This takes advantage of what, you know, I don't want to oversell, but all the expansion at Lawrence Tech with their athletics. Remember, as that stadium gets built out and you start having four thousand seat-capacity events, the parents, the visitors, where do we go? Hey, you know, just down the street, block, two blocks away, you can walk there, you drive there, you're staying at the West End. It's a beautiful fall afternoon. You walk up the street through our connected pedestrian system to someplace that... And you, Bob, you mentioned it before, about when people go to hotels, what do they do?
They want to go to restaurants.
Or they want to go to places that are active.
All the hotels right now want to locate in these town centers. They don't want to locate along the freeway to exit ramp. The hotels, like being in these town centers, they get much higher occupancy rate. The highest Hampton Inn in the country is in a town center just like this, Charlie. It's the highest reported Hampton Inn, three hundred a night.
And, you know, we've been trying to have some events in empty parking lots, create a venue where people can hang out, there's something to do year-round, and you'll get more and more. And that's why we kind of built in a small kiosk, maybe has a couple, a family restroom.
There are some, developers are going to come back, and there are some things that, that's fine, there are some things, you'll probably get one developer coming back and saying, "Okay, we like the idea of the square, but we don't want to build the streets on the other side of the square. We'll make it pedestrian-only." Those are things you should not compromise on, because if you don't have parking in front of those retail shops, then the retail shops will die. And so there will be some things that we will work with Terry on that you have to really stand for.
I think this is programmed for eighty on-street parking spaces. And part of why you meter it is not necessary to make money. Every metered space has, is two hundred thousand dollars in sales, and one-metered space equates to how many off-street parking spaces? Eight. So you're getting the volume turnover, okay? Even if it's, even if it's not always the most convenient, where you don't get that spot right in front, it creates that sense of, you know, why do you wait an hour and forty-five minutes to go to certain restaurants, right? And it also creates a little bit of buffer between vehicular and pedestrian activities. It creates a wall. It does allow for that access. And how great do you feel when you're driving around and the spot opens up and you're able to pulverate in front of it, right? So there's a lot of reasons to have on-street parking, and this is internal, it's not on our local roads. So you can create that downtown feel without, you know, all the logistics of worrying about speed on Evergreen Road and worry about meeting road commissioner open county standards and so forth.
Okay, we have some more questions. Okay. Mr. Manalabah?
Um, question, I think, is, with the housing study, did that take into account the Arbor Lofts after...
I don't remember. That was actually answered.
It was, yeah, it was out, it was published by the time it came up to the list, so I guess that's not the origin.
Okay. And then with the streets that you built inside, I've noticed that you had a entrance and exit on Evergreen Road.
Mm-hmm.
Is there enough space in front of the roundabout and...
Frank, come on, talk about this. So I certainly am not suggesting this is the end-all-be-all, and we want, we'll want to continue to vet it further. The way the circulation is designed here is that, you're talking about this roundabout here.
Yes.
So just, let me just walk you through the circulation really quickly so everybody understands. The way, if you were traveling southbound on Evergreen, you just, this side, and I hate one-way streets, this is the only place where this would make sense. This would come through, and this would be one-way. You would drive in here, you could circle around, and then you pick back up to, you know, reality and two-way streets. You could turn around, and this would be right-out only. So there's really, when you're leaving the development, headed eastbound, there's no left turn. So there's, well, one, you can cross the median, and the other, then there's right turn only. So we do have plenty of stacking space for this to happen northbound, and for this to happen southbound. When you're turning the corner, you can see the reason why we pushed the parking garage entrance and exit as far down to the west as we possibly could for stacking for that. I would encourage you, and when your developer probably will not even want to develop this corner anyway, and might even move that entrance all the way down. But you have an upwards of almost twelve vehicles traveling westbound, as well as two alternate lanes at that point. So I'm not saying it's the end-all-be-all, but we really took the circulation into great consideration, especially considering the way that the traffic is moving at the roundabouts.
What about the concept of not having any entrance entrances on Evergreen, just have that, you still have the streets, but it's more circular?
I'll let you answer that.
And I'm looking at it because we're trying to encourage more walkability.
Yeah.
And I can just see some issues, especially by the entrance, you know, hope it's, especially parallel parking.
Yeah.
I think we could reduce it to one, I think, but it's really, what we're thinking is that as you drive along Evergreen, you will see there're shops and restaurants, and you'd like to get that impulse visit. So if somebody sees that there's a place to go, they'd like to turn in. If they can't turn in here, and they have to go all the way down to here, they're not likely to turn in, because they've already gone past it. So for the viability of the retailers, they really need at least one curb cut.
Plus, I think it's really important to get those cars in there. We want this to feel like a main street. We don't want it to be a mall, a pedestrian mall. It's important for that opportunity. And the reality is, the newcomers are going to find their way, and the people that come here all the time are going to figure their way out, and they're going to park in their spot that they always do and go where they always, what they always do.
There is one curb cut there now that we closed on, but when we had the engineers look at that, we had them calculate that there would be at least one curb cut somewhere about the middle of this site. So as long as they meet their one-hundred-and-fifty-foot, two-hundred-foot offset from the intersection, it'll work.
Which is this dimension from here to here. So it's excellent question. We took, we looked at it a lot. It drove, it's a really tough site to get anything like this in. But I will not, I would say that we'll want to do a final from an engineering standpoint study.
And then between those two one-way streets, there would, you only have to go all the way around, or can you go inside?
Well, if you come in and you're like, "I don't want to be here, I want to be down the street," that's what this thing is for right here, that turnaround.
Which way is it for?
It's one way going this way to turn back around and go out. Again.
Really has a matter of reminding her.
Yeah, exactly. Or, or you can go, no, this is, this was vehicular for an accident. Or you could go all the way to go, "Oh, maybe I do want to stay, this is really cool," and park your car and go on. But that's, that's, and it's nothing we could, this is pretty standard lifestyle-centered design. This is nothing that we invested. I'll take credit for it, but it's not.
This was invented in nineteen seventeen, this design. It's in a Chicago suburb called Lake Forest. And if you ever look, if you want to look up Lake Forest, market square, this is a plan that Olmsted did in nineteen seventeen. We have been building this all around.
And taking credit for it ever since.
Yeah. It's a really Olmsted plan from nineteen seventeen. It works really well.
I have a question about the hotel. You say about one hundred and twenty-five rooms?
I think I said two back to it.
Oh, you said one hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, okay, I'll trust you.
It's a little less of what Bob's issue from up there is.
Yeah, we were a little bit more judicious.
Now, I'm going to ask a silly question, I guess. Why wouldn't anybody come to stay in that hotel?
Well, there's two questions, there's two answers to that. One is the answer that hopefully your city is promoting all the time based on your location, your offices, just where you are in the metropolitan area. You're the center of it all, right? So that's one of the reasons. The second reason is that because of this location, I think Bob talked a lot about at the last meeting about the need for hotels in this sort of more lifestyle environment. You could probably do a better job at describing it because you've got the metrics for it.
There's only one other hotel in southeast Michigan really, except the West End, the ones downtown. There's only one other hotel in suburban Detroit where you can check in and you can walk around to lots of restaurants, and that's a town center. And one of the reasons Townsend does so well is you can check in, you can walk around, and go to shops and cafes. And this would give you that kind of mini-alternative of that. You could check in, you could go shopping. You don't have to eat in the restaurant in the hotel. You can go to four or five other restaurants. And the hotels are finding much higher occupancy rate and much higher room rates when they're in little town centers like this. So I think this would outperform almost every other hotel, where you're stuck on a freeway or you're stuck on, you know, the Marriott in Troy. You can't walk to anywhere in Marriott on Troy.
Or if you Uber, if you Uber from the airport to your hotel, and you have to, have to walk to the strip mall to get something to drink. It's a pent-up demand for this, for this type of environment.
And I want to, just Terry, just a moment, because just minutes ago, you were describing this area right here, and you said, "Yeah, there's, somebody comes in, they're staying at the West End, and they decide they want to go for the walk, this is a nice place to walk." Why don't you have them stand at this hotel?
No, they would be.
No, you said the West End.
I did, because I think...
Oh, they're going to walk to the West End over here and then change their...
No, but Mr. Ficassi asked about how does it relate to everything else. I think people who stay at the Halley Inn will walk up to this development. They're all within that half-mile walking distance.
Okay. They're standing at the West End. This is full. This is full.
Yeah, this is full.
Okay.
And the other one can charge more because they're next to it.
Yeah, the other question that I have is, in this concept, did you, for entertainment, did you visualize a movie theater?
No, we didn't, not at all. That, again, Bob can talk to that a little bit more. Certainly, you could do more of a kind of curated movie house in this, in your thirty-thousand flex space, but the type of, either if it's Imagine, if it's one of those, the type of volume and number of screens that they're looking for right now would really, tell me if I'm wrong, would really overburden what we're trying to do here. There's definitely a possibility for something like that adjacent, too, but it would be pretty difficult to shoehorn some of the requirements that movie theaters, the great burden that they're, that they take on, on the kind of physical environment, that I wouldn't recommend it in this area.
I was going to say, Imagine seems to have a really good track record of it.
You know, I talked to Paul Glantz about this and Northland, and he did go to Northland. And he said he would never come here because he's not, it's too close to the Star Theater, and they have a three, four mile...
Oh, okay.
Because of the licensing of films. He said, you know, he said he couldn't come here.
Okay.
So that, that would...
Yeah, I mean, whoever the brand is, there's only about four of the big movie houses, but they have pretty specific requirements.
Possibly the Maple, is smaller, more tees.
Well, actually, that's Imagine.
Is it?
Yeah, just as a...
They just converted it.
Oh, they just converted it.
But that's good, you don't realize it.
Yeah, I mean, those are the type, or like an art house. But we, as you know, one of the things that we found, and Shelley's brought this up, is not just like the general banquet facility, but a lot of the offices who bring their employees in for a couple corporate businesses have a lot of out-town, they need a little bit larger space for meeting rooms. And this could possibly support a corporate banquet with all of our office buildings here that they can't accommodate in-house.
Any other questions, too?
I was, I had a real life situation this past week.
A real life or a real white?
This was...
Oh, okay.
We don't use that word.
Okay.
But anyway, I had a situation which is supportive of what, basically, what you're building. We, we knew at the conference, you know, the MML conference, in the Host Hotel, gorgeous hotel, but we were living in the community, a community hotel. And our conversation among one another, my friends, that we were glad we were not in the Host Hotel, but we're stuck. We're down here with the people, so to speak, and we can walk the main street, walk the areas, you go to all the shops where if we're at the Host Hotel, we would have to catch a taxi back and forth. So this kind of builds right into a real-life situation that I experienced this past week at the MML conference on that.
And I hope that you can visualize all those features that were in our visual preference survey, have been really incorporated with outdoor seating, public program space.
Not to make kids, just some kids.
Yeah, some water features, and all the things that will appeal, not just...
If you go to the spy span, then you're going to have a lot of kids.
Not just, not just to the business community, but this could be a place that after hours benefits the residents, and it benefits events and people coming back on the weekends.
And I just said that, I'm supportive of this concept, I can see where it will work in, obviously, for that bay in essence to this part of town.
Well, you're spot-on. We recently, I think we talked about it the last time, the city of Detroit recently hosted the Congress for New Urbanism, which is the international, you know, venue, conference of like-minded individuals. And we specifically, or they specifically, as the host committee, decided not to have it in Cobo, not to have it in Renson, and did something entirely new, which people didn't think would work, and we pulled it off, where specifically had all of the venues at very small, little, specific little restaurants, little theaters, et cetera, around the downtown with no actual vacuous conference space that people really enjoyed. That was their number-one comment about how they enjoyed the conference, was walking around the venue.
So me and my kids were riding our bikes this week, and we rode up, we saw some people, not much, we rode up, we saw some people playing volleyball that we knew. We didn't have to see a lot of bike racks, because I wanted to just make sure that we, I was like, "Where are you going to start?" We didn't see a lot of bike racks, and so I just wanted to make sure that actually it's beautiful.
Don't worry about that.
When you're done, when you're done...
Here's the twenty dollars, I promise.
He's a bike rack.
And that's actually, when you're done, we'll show you the, or if you want to see the live model, they're actually built into the live model. You see them here, here, and there's someone either side. But it's a really good point, because with, as we, you plan for future biking, use the structure in the city of Southfield, kind of that overall circulation that we talked about, in and out, where are people going, that'll be really important to make sure that that shows up.
They had a whole session of MML on bike, yes.
Are you, excuse me for interrupting. Are you, are you planning T foot sidewalks?
Oh, no. We'd definitely be a little bit wider in this environment. I can go back and look at it, but it's...
Oh, wow. So that people could walk and bike at the same time?
Well, no, this wouldn't be part of the, I mean, the way they get around this site on the bikes isn't, it's not part of a larger bike infrastructure. This would be sort of a stop-in. It probably wouldn't be part of any kind of a planned greenway. The sidewalks themselves are probably twelve, are probably twelve...
Twelve, fourteen, and that would allow for outdoor seating and walking.
But again...
So you would ride your bike up Evergreen Road and then use one of the bike racks, lock your bike...
The biking infrastructure would probably be on Evergreen or might be on, yeah. It certainly, bikes are welcome in there, but this is more of a, a, a stop-off as opposed to along the way.
Okay, Mr. Ficassi.
Question about those, uh, parking decks. If they were, uh, why are they in the corners? In other words, the corners are premium in the retail business. I would think that the corners would have, uh, retail on the lower and apartments above, which you would then have apartments versus apartments. And the parking deck would probably be more centralized in the middle somewhere.
So, um-
As opposed to on all the corners.
Uh, oh, I'm sorry, you said parking, what did you say?
Parking decks.
Right, but did you say they would be on corners or?
Pardon, no, he doesn't want them on corners.
They don't want them on corners, right.
They're not a pretty thing to see, no matter what you do with them. And, and when you're having, uh, where the lofts are and you have residential, they'd be looking at the, at the parking deck. Same way as Five Thousand would be looking at the parking decks. If they would be kind of centralized, then everybody in, in the retail can go to the parking decks if they wish. When, when parallel parking is full, they can go easily into some central place to park. But idle retail and corners are premium, retail-
That's a valid point.
I think that's a really good comment. We could, we could take the first levels of these garages, put in some retail on those corners. That's a good, that's a good, this is retail on these corners. But we could take the other corners on the first level right inside the deck. That's a really good idea. Yeah.
We could, we, we could certainly, and, and a couple of other things that talk about why it ended up here, just so everybody understands the thinking. This, so we have on this site, if it's this, our new squared off site, if it's the, the other, if this site you actually own, you've got a lot more corners. This is actually not a corner. This is, uh, and if we think about your four most high, you know, out of, out of, if I were to rate these one, two, three, four, this would probably be four as part of, part of visibility and sellability, which is one of the main reasons that it ended up there. And based on sort of more humanistic block sizes, you really don't want your blocks to be too big and we don't want them to be too small. And knowing that probably the thing that could kill this, the thing that could kill this whole project from happening is how are we gonna finance the, the, this deck getting built? Um, there's lots of tricks, as you said. You can skin them, you can line with retail, you can do single loaded residential, you can do lots of things. But the best thing sometimes you can do is just create a parking deck. And there's certain dimensions that make them as economically feasible as possible. What a particular run and a particular width that we tried to break into this development to make it one of the more least expensive decks. And when we, and we, we moved it, you know, we, we had, we had many, 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 many options. And the reason that it landed here is one, because we thought if there, this is the least viable of the corners. Um, but it is a very fair point. It will, but selling this deck as retail over here will be a little bit different sell, which is why we have lots of other parking opportunities. But the other reason is because the actual dimensions that we're showing here is the most economically feasible. It's the most efficient deck layout from a size perspective. So we, we definitely can appreciate, you know, your experience with that. But we, and, and again, with your final plan, um, what's important is that there's no surface parking lots. What's important is you have active first floor frontages. What's important is that you have a place. You can say, meet me at this place now in Southfield. So those are some of the, more of the compelling vision that ties this all together. So there's definitely-
See, I like Central Park Boulevard, pick up some of the retail also.
Certainly.
As you go towards the expressway, it's a short street, then it's, you know, you have your Thursday evenings, uh, there, there, there. It's really comfortable being in that location. And, and it'd be, you know, the extension of retail could go very up and down.
Yeah, I think we all agree that, um, Evergreen Road is the primary that retailers are gonna start with. As that gets developed, that'll make Central Park more valuable as this thing develops out west.
A lot of cities have required, um, inline retail being built into their parking decks. Um, I'd be, you know, stay in touch with us or whoever your consultant would be at the point, to be really careful about that because there's nothing worse than an empty, unleased space.
I was gonna ask you, you know, how many examples?
Of which one of?
The intel reach of the-
Oh, ev- I mean, every, everywhere.
The parking deck?
The Z Lot.
Yeah, I, I mean, there's countless downtowns. It's, it's pretty-
Z Lot?
Yeah, on Broadway, right in, um, right in downtown Detroit, it's just northeast of, uh, but there's a million downtown as well. But the most recently is the Z Lot.
Well, even the Con- or-
Conpyware is all first-line retail, yeah. That you, you see, and you don't notice that they're there.
And then there's other places like Dearborn where it hasn't been as successful.
Right.
So you gotta-
You gotta find the-
Find the right balance.
Right.
And Detroit has a density to support that, whereas, uh, you go to Dearborn where they try to, you've got a lot of empty storefronts and then it looks like it's not a desirable place to be.
So it'll be a delicate balance, especially as you approach this and what market we're entering into when you've kind of gone public with this. Um, but you, there's very easy ways that we can widen Central Park Boulevard, but it's probably going to be, um, one of the least viable from a retail perspective, at least today. It could be ten years from now, we could be talking about a totally different environment. We can build certain setbacks into the requirements of the parking deck that you could build in the future. Um, there's, there's lots of opportunities there.
Well, as much fun as we're having, we have a, we have a lot of agenda difference, pretty shit.
So if you have any other questions about the design, anything else, forward and Monty Taylor. Um, and that's probably all you'll hear from us on this one. Uh, the next step is to, you wanna go to the-
Yeah, I just wanna wrap up with the next steps, what you said.
Please.
So, um, we'll incorporate the feedback that we received tonight into like a more formalized report. And then we'll bring it back for, for council's adoption of the vision. And then we'll work with, with purchasing and city administration and, um, to go to that RFQ, RFP stage and then start vetting this. And we'll start looking at Mr. Zorn, um, some innovative ways to help get this funded, uh, working with Ms. Fields. I'm, I'm maybe bringing some DNR money that could help support public space and our brownfield. And, and I, I, I believe, you know, firmly that, uh, there are more potential partnerships with adjacent property owners, such as Ettgen and others.
Now, what do you anticipate coming back with all that stuff you just talked about?
We were thinking maybe October, if not sooner.
We'll be, we'll be looking for any comments?
Well, the, your October regular meeting for adoption.
October twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Period, I was trying, uh, an offline conversation regarding the fulfillment development. I think that's absolutely very critical before an RFQ goes out.
Right, that's part of vetting, the, the implementation part of it. But we wanted to at least give the final concept vision and then package and start working on, fine-tuning it for your adoption.
Okay. Thank you very much. Our second item on our agenda is the elimination of yard waste bag sales.
Mr. President, I definitely am interested in, uh, down the Green is in the, uh, address this side of, uh, it was presented to the, um, the September Finance Committee and it was a complaint to move aside and forward to the Congress.
Obviously, the agenda I've been through several reasons, why we should carefully consider ending the program. I'd like to just touch on a few of them. First of all, our firefighters are a lot busier than when the program was initiated. Two thousand one hundred and five firefighters, eleven thousand calls. This year, eighty-four firefighters projected to have fourteen thousand calls. That means a lot of the time is taken up by their activities, getting trucks ready, responding, training. Also means that a lot of times our residents are inconvenienced when they go to the fire station. Because they get there and obviously they're out on a run or they're out on training. Another reason the bags may work a little better now than they were in two thousand one was maybe they weren't as readily available. Right now, we're selling the bags under cost, under what it costs us to buy them. The cost, we're selling them for twenty-nine cents a bag, they're costing us about thirty-eight cents a bag, latest numbers. There's a philosophical question about, should we be taxing businesses to sell products that they sell below cost? So if we did increase our prices just to what it costs us to buy the bags, not what it costs us to transport them and so forth, we would be at thirty-eight cents. At thirty-eight cents a bag, there's at least two locations in the city that already have bags cheaper than us. San Spal, if you're not a member, Home Depot. So then it becomes a matter of convenience. And probably buying from Home Depot is a little more convenient than even getting it here. You're carrying them out here, Home Depot, you have a cart. So that's another thing to consider. Also, there's a homeland security issue. As you know, we had the bombing in New York. If you're a terrorist and you wanna attack a city, the best people to take out are the firefighters. There are emergencies, there are firefighting, there are rescue. Think of all the things that you can do, you can't do now or you can't go now because of safety issues. That's really what this is. This fire department is not people who are just sort of waiting around if we ever need them. They're a vital lifesaving resource for us that we need to protect. In addition, we've also seen where, with the police department, where an emotionally disturbed person went in and actually attacked them. We don't know that same thing could happen to the police, to the firefighters. Now, after the police attack, we've made some security changes to help prevent that sort of thing from happening. Wouldn't it be great if we had a safe foresight in relation to the firefighter? The problem with selling bags at the fire station is that every single person, they see someone coming, it's, oh, hey, one more person about to sell bags, come on in. If there's a whole lot less people coming to that fire station, there's gonna be more contemplation. It's just natural. If we didn't sell at the fire station, I thought, well, couldn't we just sell them at City Hall? Problem is over half the bags are sold at the fire stations. It's just not feasible to double the bag sales through City Hall, a little more than double. The clerk's office helps out with some where there's no, no one at the receptionist desk. But we, we couldn't ask them to do that twice as much. And I, I don't think Pleasant could handle twice as many bag sales. So I understand it's a great program, but for a lot of real practical reasons, it, it's time to move on from that. And a lot of other cities have made the same decision. I did post a question on the city manager list server. Has anyone started bag sales recently? Has anyone ended? There were no started, there were a lot of ended. It's a decision that's being made in many cities.
Okay, any questions? Uh, Mayor?
Uh, I, I agree with you that, uh, we should end selling them at, uh, the fire halls. I've had that experience going to the fire hall, not for bags, but they were out.
That's what they do.
Doing their job. When I read this, I thought, uh, you know, we really encourage recycling and we're encouraging cleanup appearances, but we shouldn't be losing money on it. So, uh, my compromise would be to sell them at City Hall at Parks and Rec, where they, they have cash transactions all the time for Parks and Rec events. And, uh, that, um, we should sell them probably slightly above what the, the retailers sell them for. I, I don't really wanna see us beneath the program, uh, but, but I, I think you got a very good point about the fire halls. That's just an extra burden for our firefighters. And I think also the program probably needs better cash management. And I think you can see that through Parks and Rec, they write a receipt for everything and, uh, that's my suggestion.
Okay, Mr. Malabon?
I noticed that the proposals to end this January first, two thousand and eighteen-
Yes.
Will go through next year. Why prolong the meeting?
Well, because people buy bags at different times of the year. And if we do it on this timeframe, we will know for sure that every time someone came in to buy a bag, probably they were notified. We know that maybe some, some people buy them in the spring. We think leaves, but they're not always leaves. Maybe people, you know, buy them in the summer or this way, no matter what time of the year you go in to buy a bag, you're gonna come in, we're gonna say, hey, by the way, this will be the last year for bags.
So then, if we were to prolong until January first, two thousand and eighteen, would it make sense to increase the price to at least break even? Cause you're not talk, you're talking, what, additional sixty cents per pack, and even three fifty? I just, I think, we still leave the sales tax, but-
That would be reasonable, and I'm sure that can be done administratively. In fact, one of the things that was also mentioned by the fire department was, please make it an even number. Because all those pennies and it's, but I'm, I'm sure we could at least reduce our costs. And I, I think that's appropriate. I mean, these are tax dollars. We do have companies out there selling these bags who are contributing to a product that's being sold under its cost.
And they usually have better hours then.
One more convenient, I bought bags here once, but I won't do it anymore. You have to carry them quite a distance. I've seen Pleasant put them on his wheelchair to carry them out for people. If I go to Home Depot, they have a fast cart. I can just drop them in, drop it out to my truck, I'm done.
There's also a lot of residents that I speak to that don't even know that we offer this service. So it's, I have more of the, um, the newer residents don't necessarily know we offer it where they belong to residence. So it's, I don't know, I would still, I would still push to at least break even.
I'm gonna say, Mike Scannan, over the border, firefighters told me that someone came to and said, you know, this is kind of a bother coming here. I wouldn't do it if it didn't support you guys.
Thank you. Hey, you heard me.
Mr. Cruz?
I'm all in favor of going to school, sticking ahead with this. I don't see any reason why we need to be in the business of building the bags. It just, it just, to me, doesn't make any sense at all. Financially, we're, we're losing money. Secondly, it, no matter where we put them, we're taking away work time from people in their offices that they have to do whatever else they're being, like you said, whether it's fire, whether it will be Parks and Recs, whether it will be cars up front. We, we, it's not, we're not in the business, what else are we gonna start us up? You know what I'm saying? You could say, you could turn it a whole other thing, go, I mean, what are we doing here? It's not, it's not a vital part of, I think, what the city does for its residents, whatever resources and places you find to get this stuff. I don't wanna pull the rug right out from, I was like, kinda like what I already was saying, I mean, sooner than better, but people that have relied on it for a while, we need to get communicated out to folks in a, in a way that, uh, people aren't caught off guard from it. But I would say, let's, uh, let's, I would wanna do as quickly as possible to, to eliminate this, the bag sales person.
That, that's an excellent point, sir. If I could just elaborate one little bit on that. We're not really equipped to deal with bulk material like that. And I'm sure some of the fire stations, they can drop them pallet to a problem. Here, they're carrying them in or using a two-wheel cart. That is a lot of time. I, I look at those employees and I think, you know, I'd rather have them fixing my street or doing something else, clean up a park than doing something other than carrying bags and bundles of bags into the City Hall.
Mr. Verywell?
Yeah, we just went through the science and, and I'm a user of this service. I've, I've been using the service since, uh, since I started cutting home grass. Now, I talk to my neighbors, I say, don't shoot pigeons over here. But I think the, uh, the fact of having it open next season, that is to let the neighbors know, but it, that the city know that we are discontinuing this. And it's, it is a service that, that we are providing. And that is, I think the, the casual concept of it is that, that we're giving them notice that they're going, and that's a goal, uh, of other sources. And I, just from a standpoint of raising the price, I think the fact that we are taking away the service, I think we just continue to lose it. The, the amount of money is, is miniscule, really. And it just, uh, letting people know that we are discontinuing this, that, uh, and we give you a fair notice and we will continue to lose money for this particular season, but we're ending it. And just, just cut it, uh, I think it's a, uh, it's a gift to the, uh, residents that we are continuing for one more summer. Uh, and that will be, and I, I think that there will be a further, not count, if you're not counting cows, then what we are losing and this is another reason, you know, uh, just end it where it is and give them fair notice. They have fair notice and they know that their city has, uh, loses a few pennies per bag and that they, that they be happy, that they don't, they don't have to sit there for that.
Okay, anybody else? Ms. Megs?
If we're going to double the amount of bags here at City Hall, where are we gonna store it? We don't have room in our department. It's my understanding that we're going to be using the offices over here. Where are we gonna store all these extra bags? I know my staff is not gonna be able to run up and down, I mean, they're heavy as it is right now and when we take them over, you know, they push them over on a big cart, but have we even thought about that? We're going to double? You don't think it's going to be an issue? Or we're going to keep them here? Oh, you said not till 2018, and if we're going to...
Oh, no, they will stay in the fire department until then.
The proposal wasn't leave it as it was until 2018.
Now, doesn't also the fire station, one, have a sign because they're two stories, they don't sell bags anymore, or is it my...
I go to two. You know, the mayor had a point, and I don't know if he developed it, it's, well, as I wanted him to. And that is, by raising the price, then the sales might die of some weight because people say, why would I want to go over there when I'm driving right by two other places to get the bags at the fire station? But for the people sitting around the table that are relatively new, there's a reason that we're doing it the way we're doing it. When we started the yard waste bags, we were, at that time, we were having spring cleanup. And every spring, it would take a month, and it would follow the same track as the trash pickup. Started at the north side of the city, one week. You could put anything out there that you wanted. And we encouraged, we were encouraging people to clean up the yard, get their spring cleaned up. And in order to encourage that, we would provide bags conveniently at the fire stations so that people could get fire, go to the fire stations and get their bags. And that's the genesis of how this all started, and it's just been something that's been going on and on and on. Any plan, any program eventually loses usefulness, and maybe this is the time to pull the plug on it. But I would, I would like to see the program stop at the request of the people that are buying bags rather than us with the heavy hands saying, okay, folks, I know we, for all these years, we've been giving, selling bags to you, but now you're on your own. So, and I don't know how to do that. I really, I really don't know how to do that, but maybe it is time for the end of the program. Mr. Cruz?
Just had another thought, just, and I hear what you're saying, I mean, if we could do it and it worked out, that'd be great and everything. But I'm just thinking of the fact that, you know, it's a program that actually only benefits a certain population of the city, yet it, but other folks aren't contributing to the fund, and that doesn't benefit from the program. So, in that regard, it might be another way to look at it, in a sense that we want to be equitable for everybody. So, it gives us more rationale of being able to walk away and stop doing it and continue the way that we are.
I think too, if, once we announce it, and there's substantial blowback, you know, we can deal with that when the plan comes up.
Give me your teller.
If that line gets hot, I'll let you know. So, I think we just put it out there, and we get substantial blowback in there. The program is, and most people now are pretty acclimated, a lot of people, you know, to go into Home Depot, well, pick up their own bags. And I had almost, my neighbor, he didn't believe that he can go get bags for twenty-nine cents, you know, he's all... So, I think if we gradually socialize individuals and just phase it out next year with a proper notice, it's relieved, you know, all the conditions that John spoke of, and also the other potential positions here at City Hall.
I think you should give it to the police department.
Put it on the truck of the car.
You had your hand up, you had your hand up, so I'll do it.
Mr. President? My hearing consensus that we can increase the price to...
A cheap bag there.
And round it up, maybe forty cents a bag, ten bag, you know, even ten bags, four dollars.
I thought it was, if we went up sixty cents, then you're at least breaking even without sales tax. Because you said we don't charge taxes.
You only want to introduce that, because that's a whole other issue that, you have some concerns about sales and use tax.
Right, but that's, I would just even it out, just break even, three fifty for...
I'll just even it out, just phase it out.
I mean, the pure fact is that if our firefighters potentially be at risk, let's just...
Well, except we're not going to end it for another year. We have to figure out what we're going to do.
Well, I'm certainly not opposed to getting the fire guys out of this sooner than later.
But, you know, if you raise the price, it'll diminish the sales.
That's right.
And that's one way to phase it out. And I agree with what the fire department has. It should be even, so they don't have to be able to change, four bucks.
I think we should end the first day. After fall, after fall, then you go in the winter. You know, you start the spring, and you just come out with a big announcement.
Well...
Because...
Yeah, we might have product that we...
But go give it to Home Depot.
And I don't think we need to beat this to death. We just say, we'll phase it out next year. Everything stays the same. The residents realize that we're losing money on it. We're not trying to, you know, dig deep into their pockets that we're taking a loss, a miniscule loss. And just phase it out. Come January, it's all done, everybody's happy. And the residents realize, we don't want the extra ten, fifteen cents from them. We just want to phase it out. Got a lot of reasons to phase it out. And it is a program that is, you know, extremely useful, and it is, and so it's been useful. And we just want to phase it out for numerous reasons. But the main reason is that we have issues with the fire department, and we have issues here at City Hall with posting of the bags and all that good stuff. So, just, you know, why beat this to death? Just phase it out, January 2018?
When do, when do we buy our bags? When do we go out prepared for the bags? Is there a certain time? Is it in winter time, and get ready for spring, or...
We generally actually make purchases of bags for maybe five times a year. I just looked at the actual purchases. Now, I'm not sure what our, if we have them under contract still. I don't know if we have to rebend them again, but I do know that we usually receive four shipments a year.
I think, I think that, what I'm trying to get at is, you could find that you could sever the role of doing bags, and I would think that right after fall, you go into winter, you know, and, you know, let's start bagging smoke.
If I could mention, if we do have extra bags, CPW does use some of them. And there we go.
Okay, let's go around, go around the table. The proposal that was presented to us this evening about eliminating, maintaining the program as is until January 2018. Do you agree with that? And that's, that's, I'm asking for a consensus around the table. It's either yes or no.
Yes, yes.
No, 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 no.
Mr. Madewell?
Everything would stay the same until 2018, right?
Yes.
As it was proposed.
Yes.
As we both.
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Yes, we can, we can give... The answer is yes. We took a vote to put it in public.
I want to qualify that. No, it's not to end the program, it is to end it at the end of this year.
Okay. Next item on our agenda...
Oh, there he is.
Is...
The bagger.
Mr. Chief?
Yes, and good evening, council, Mayor Cyver, members of the community. I'm here this evening requesting authorization to enter into a contract extension with, for detention facility operations with G4S, formerly known as Wacken Hut. And just a brief review for council. Back in 2008, after a breakdown in negotiations with the Oakland County Sheriff's Department, we privatized our jail services, our lockup services. So, now we have a seventy-two hour lockup on the third floor of our police department. It's run by a company called G4S now, and they provide all of our services. So, I'm here this evening asking for authorization to enter into a contract extension with that company. I have Lieutenant Ted Goff to talk about the details of that extension.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As Chief Hawkins mentioned, back in 2008, we contracted with Whitehot Security, which is now known as G4S, to operate our detention facility. The current contract did expire at the end of August. We are requesting an amendment to that contract. That contract was signed in 2014 with a one-year option to extend it through this year, and we are asking to amend the previous contract so that we have a second one-year option, which we then ask also that you execute that, which will take us through August 31st of 2017. During that time, I've had discussions with the purchasing department, we will put the contract out to bid again. We've talked to other departments that have similar setups to what we have most locally. G4S also operates a lot of facilities, Sterling Heights. They put theirs out to bid about two years ago, and there were no other companies that were qualified. Actually, I don't even think anybody ended up submitting a contract bid on their pools on that. So, we are confident that G4S is the most qualified company out there. But we want to make sure that we are getting the best services that we can for the money that we pay them. The suggested amendment and extension will increase the amount paid to G4S by three percent over what was paid previously. Through discussions with G4S, they did agree, dating back to 2008, when this arrangement was first established, they agreed to hold their rates flat for the first several years. There was a small increase two years ago, now they're asking for an additional three percent. That amount was budgeted in the 2016, 2017 police department budget, so the money is available. We did plan for this. And so, again, they are requesting that the council authorize the amendment of the previous contract to allow for the second one-year extension or option period, and that we also, or that you also extend that, act upon that extension that you activated for the third year.
Mr. Fracassi?
Is the lockups improving the same, or the...
Pardon me?
Lockups. Is that about the same number? Is it getting better, bigger, or is it lower?
The number of prisoners that we handle each year has stayed roughly the same over the last few years. It's somewhere usually in the two thousand to twenty-five hundred arrests per year. And that's the number of arrests that are brought in from our officers on the street. The lockup also processes prisoners who are brought down from the Oakland County Jail because they have court appearances on earlier cases as well. But as far as new arrests per year, it's stayed pretty steady between two thousand and two thousand five hundred each year.
Mr. Cruz?
Yeah, only question, only, I guess maybe state of the head was, what two things. Number one, unfortunately, I'm bringing up the extension. I mean, it's clearly something we need to do. What has kind of bothered me a few times is the fact that we've gotten contract extensions and asked for requests for them after contracts have expired already. And I'm just kind of curious as to why we continue, why we're maybe not more efficient in our time to do these things prior to, but if those, once the contract is extended, I mean, if it's expired, the company doesn't necessarily have to carry out services, I would guess, unless there's something in it that says it's an automatic renewal after it extends. You know what I'm talking about, something like that. So, I would like to know what would happen.
And it's something we need to be more efficient. You're absolutely right. We're working right now with our purchasing department to put together some ticklers for our contracts so that not just the police department, but all of the departments in the city that have contracts can know in advance that contracts will be coming up and will be expired, and we can take the appropriate action. Absolutely, we recognize that, and we will make those necessary corrections.
And that topic just came up at last month's finance meeting. Obviously, the city has multiple contracts, a particular system, and our IT department is working with us to find a software package that better tracks that. Monthly, the finance committee is looking at what's bidding. And the next step for us, what we discussed, is what contracts are expiring. So, we're now looking at a monthly snapshot of what's coming down the pipeline and that, but we need a better ticker system. And that would be easier for all across the board to look up where a contract resides. We really need something of greater efficiency.
And that's part of, and that's part of the monthly purchasing report. It's being refined to look out ninety days, and also potential one-hundred-and-twenty days, what's coming due. And I think that is being refined and...
And until we give them, we're going to, our departments are going to have to, you know, when does this soft contract expire? When does this contract expire? We really need to have a better system. You know, the city clerk is put some time in looking for software as well. But it is on our radar screen. It's up there. We have to spend some money on it.
Any other, Mr. Brightwell?
I'm supportive of this, but from a current events standpoint, just the same Wacken Hut that got in deep trouble several years ago with the federal government, and they had to go change their name. It had to do with something in Iraq, Wacken Hut. Is this the same company?
I'm not familiar with whatever problems they may have had in the past, but yes, it is the Wacken Hut Security that we've heard about for years, and they changed their name. We've been with them since 2008. I would say it's probably been about six years or so since they changed their name.
They changed their name, but they got called to speak before Congress. Now, they said something happened in Iraq.
Something that Mitt Romney's brother or...
Yeah, there was some local Michigan person, yeah, some local, a kid who grew up in Michigan. Yeah, but anyway, that has nothing to do with it. I'm not supportive of it, but I just, from a current event standpoint, that is... It is the same company. And they changed their name for that particular reason, they screwed up. Just, just as a FYI, what is the most, this is a general question. What is the most critical thing you ask these people to do? In essence, that they're being paid for the most critical thing that they're being paid for?
Well, I would think that the most critical function that they perform is safety and everything that that entails. The safety of our officers, the safety of their detention officers, and the safety of the people that come into the facility. You know, they are corrections officers. They're training and certified actually to a higher level than what the state mission requires for somebody in that position. It's one of the things we really like about this company, that they have very good training, very good certification, and they do the job very well.
Any other questions? I also was concerned about the fact that this is an immediate need to act. That, to me, the expiration of a contract should not be a surprise. And I'm certainly hope that our city administrator is correct that we're trying to get on top of that and document when things are due and when they're, when they're coming up and have enough lead time so that we can do business in a businesslike way. Because this is all, this is reactive. And Mr. Cruz is right. If they wanted to play hardball with us, when their contract ended, they could say, we're going home. Unless there's a clause in there that says, until the next contract is signed. But they're not guaranteed that they're going to win the next contract. So, I would...
I'll move a rule to that, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved by Mr. Fracassi, supported by Mr. Brightwell. Do we find an immediate need to act? Is everybody prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I move that, that we extend the detention facility operations.
Contract?
Contract.
It's been moved by Mr. Fracassi, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we extend the...
It's been moved by Mr. Fracassi, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we extend the, the contract for, uh, G four S as presented by the police department. Is there any discussion? Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on our, uh, agenda is, uh, received bids for the demolition. Don't get mad at me, now. Don't give me a ticket out of here. I received a bid for demolition and reconstruction of the salt dome, a salt dome at the, uh, DPW area.
My name is Adriana Melker. I'm from Hobo Rock and Clark. Project architect.
Yeah, speak up.
My name is Adriana Melker from Hobo Rock and Clark. I'm the project architect on the project. Uh, we received bids, um, in the, uh, in the, uh, return in the eighth. Uh, we gave a bid to purchasing last week. Is everybody familiar with the dome concept? Where is, where is the dome?
Anybody, uh...
Are there any questions?
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, let me just take, uh, the council's now, now rule, the salt dome had collapsed. It's over thirty years old. The conveyor belt system has not worked in five years. Purchasing department went out to bid. Uh, we received two bids. The low bid was the Dome Corporation of North America, two pile-by-bids. The bid price is seven hundred sixty-three thousand, hundred and three point nine dollars, ten cents. Uh, we're requesting to authorize the, uh, demolition and reconstruction of the salt dome, the Dome Corporation of North America, and further to make, uh, two budget adjustments for the major local street building improvement, and the amount totaling eight hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred fifty-nine dollars. In addition to the seven hundred sixty-three thousand, one hundred and three dollars, ten cent bid price, is engineering and inspection, and the amount of fifty-four thousand, seven sixty-eight, sixty cents, and a contingency of eighty-one thousand, seven eighty-seven, uh, thirty, and that's a, a ten percent, uh, contingency. We checked earlier in the week, we, we do have fund balances above our major and our local street funds. This is a transfer from a fund balance of major and local street funds into the major local street building improvement fund. And that's how we'll, uh, fund the construction of the salt dome.
Yeah. Mr. Manalma?
Um, for this salt dome, is that, obviously, it's the salt of the truck, but do these trucks also, is that part of our agreement with Oakland County to salt Oakland County roads and, or is it strictly the, the local streets?
We do have a, uh, an agreement for winter maintenance. We just, uh, last, late last week, the contract came on winter maintenance, and that'll come to council probably October, uh, and there are certain county roads that we do maintain that were compensated, uh, from, from the council.
Or are we, does part of the compensation count towards building maintenance or facilities?
There is a prescribed rate in Act fifty-one for major and local streets for salting and that, so that is what we take into our, our rates. Bottom line is, the, uh, the county agreement, there is a slight, I quickly looked at it on Saturday, a slight increase, a couple percent in, uh, previous year's, uh, contract. It's not something we do in, for a, for a profit. It's something we do, um, you know, the county's definition of snow removal would be one run against, uh, up against Greenfield, one run against Ainxter until they get a chance. So this is something we do for the better.
So they're not, they're not contributing towards the, they're not gonna, I guess part of their contract, they're not contributing anything towards this salt dome?
It, it is our asset, something we own.
Can we get money for that? Can we get money from them?
To build it?
To help offset some of the costs?
Blood from the rock. I mean, they, when you, they, when you chip in a ten-mile road, I mean, we had to put in two hundred thousand dollars to fix ten-mile road, which is theirs. We had to put six hundred thousand dollars into Greenfield, which is theirs. Um, so, now, we did some other work on Greenfield Road, but, uh, I think the two hundred thousand on that ten-mile road was just because they played, we don't have enough money, our pockets are empty, and if you want ten-mile done, uh, come up with two hundred thousand dollars. So, no, we aren't, we keep... Uh, Mr. Fracassi?
I was just gonna ask, the, uh, are they still repairing this, or are you gonna build something new?
This is a, a tear-down and build new. As I understand the scope of work, uh, we're going to slide a new pad over, build the new dome, and then take the old one down. Uh, and if you've seen that, the, uh, salt, and I'm sure that was a mummified or pressure-treated lumber when it was built, it just re-aimed into the lumber itself. It's just dry.
Are we looking to, to make any improvements in, in that one that we have, uh, in the new one? In other words, things that we have seen have not been workable, uh, you know, the size or the opening or rain getting under the salt, making it hard. Are we doing any improvements?
Yeah, I can speak to that. Uh, for, for the existing dome right now, uh, there is a four-foot concrete, uh, wall that the dome sits on, but raising that up to ten feet, so it's gonna be much taller, and that'll help to contain the salt below the actual dome, uh, so it'll increase longevity right there. Uh, we're also, right now, the inside pad of the dome is asphalt, uh, which is worn away, um, there's professions hitting, you know, it, it looks very terrible, and it's not good for long maintenance. So the new dome is gonna have a concrete pad, uh, which is gonna be very much, much more robust. Uh, it's also gonna last long, uh, and we've also added, uh, an additive to it to protect it long-term from salt exposure.
Thank you. Um, any other questions? One question, for the past five years, uh, have they been using front loaders? Is that how they've been giving us salt out of it?
That is correct. That's part of the additional wear and tear, bringing a front loader and scooping, backing out. It has been taking us probably three times as long to get salt out of that dome, first hand in a conveyor belt.
And, uh, how is the, how is the salt, uh, put in the dome? Is it, uh...
Currently?
Well, with the new, with the new dome...
The conveyor itself. So you would drop the salt, the conveyor would take it into the building and drop the, it drops it right into the center?
Okay, so you have conveyor on the outside, uh, and it drops it into the, into the building?
Yep. Then you can kind of direct it, it drops it wherever you need it, so you can look, you know, direct it towards, wherever it's empty in the dome.
And then how do we get the salt out of the dome onto the trucks?
Typically, I think what they would do is use the loaders at that point.
They would, they've been using front loaders, and they're going in that wide door and scooping, backing out, and...
Is that, is that tradition, I mean, is that the design of how to get the salt out?
That is the fault of the broken conveyor belt.
Okay. My question is, how do we get, they have a conveyor that goes in. Is a portable conveyor belt, is that?
No, it's fixed. It's, it's designed to take salt in.
Okay. Then my question is, how do we get it out? How do we load the trucks?
The new, the new.
With the new one, yeah.
Yeah, the new, new dome.
Is there gonna be a conveyor that takes the salt out?
Conveyor takes it in and takes it out.
It, yeah, it can go both ways, but I think the, well, I guess I'm not certain how they intend to take it out for...
And I, I thought you were asking how we're currently doing.
No.
Okay.
No, no, I'm, I did say the conveyor's been broken for five years, so they've been using front loaders. What is the mechanism for getting salt into the new dome, which is a conveyor belt? Understood. It comes off the back of the truck, into the, probably through the top of the, of the dome. How does it get back out of the dome onto the trucks that are gonna be salting the roads?
I believe the intent is to take it out through front loaders off the door.
Does that stay the same, same way? Does it stay the same?
Yeah, that's, that's the way it's done.
There's no other way you can do it.
Unless you have a smaller conveyor that...
Well, it's, it's on the, it's, it's on cement.
Yeah.
The, the way they're doing it, and so you, you'd have to be up high enough to be a conveyor to, to go out. You can't pick it up this way and put it on the truck, so if I use a front end loader, you grab it and you go up.
Okay.
That's, I've always seen them do it, even when the conveyor was working.
Look, let me do some, before I start, I've never in my career here seen the conveyor system work, but I'm under the impression that you can load stuff onto conveyor and back it out, drop, but...
I, I believe that the way this one is set up, it drops from quite high, so in order for you to get salt back onto it, but at least the particular one that we're getting, um, it's not really set up for that. There are other kinds, I believe, that you could take it out, but I think the way this one is...
Any other questions?
I'm gonna send a couple.
Chief, just wait. Where's Larry?
He's on vacation this week. We actually have a number of the public works guys are up at the, um, CMU week-long training. Uh, we're two supervisors this week.
Okay, when is this supposed to be on our...
The next regular meeting.
'Cause I don't see it today.
We're not asking for the whole time.
'Cause I don't, I don't see, uh, the, the meeting that will be on. All right, this'll be on our next regular, our next regular meeting. If this is a, uh, prefabricated salt dome, why are the engineering costs so much?
There are a great deal of site costs involved, the site, uh, design elements involved right now, so if, if you, if you have a site plan, if you have a site plan, if you'd like to see one, um, the way that it's set up now, the drive that's right in front of the dome is how they load onto the conveyor. Well, with the setup of the new dome, because we have to go right next to the existing, we didn't have room to locate the conveyor right up against the drive, so the conveyor is actually located kind of off to the side, and we didn't extend the drive, it kind of weeds around, there's some existing bins for storage. The new drive goes all the way around so that they can load and kind of go in a circle. So there's some extensive grading that needed to happen in that area. The, the current site's about five foot higher from where the existing dome is, so there was, that's a number of site elements that were involved for, for that reason.
Okay. All right. If there are no other questions, let's, we'll put this on our next regular agenda.
Thank you.
Okay?
To get your answer.
Uh, next item is the agreement with SMART.
Somebody wants to hear?
Nicole, that is, you know, we're gonna miss out. Is he our, uh, director of senior recreational services?
I'm good, thank you. I guess I'll sign.
They had to be one's name.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, I wanna make sure that you hear me. I'm Nicole from the Senior Center. It's very nice to be here this evening. I'm here to talk to you about our transportation program, which is called Transportation of Southfield Seniors. It's called TOS. And there are a lot of people here that aren't familiar with the program, so we just wanted to give you a brief synopsis of the program itself. I work for Parks and Recreation with Terry Fields. I'm the director at the Senior Center. And the transportation program through TOS is funded at about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for the program itself. We receive about one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars a year from SMART to support this program. We receive twenty thousand a year from Providence. We receive seventy-five hundred a year from Beaumont and five hundred from Comerica Bank. We also receive about twenty-six thousand a year from Community Development Block Grant Fund. It went up this year, it was, used to be twenty-three thousand. So this program runs Monday through Friday from eight to four. It's by appointment only. There are at least two vehicles on the road every day, Monday through Friday. You have to schedule an appointment a month in advance. We ask a month in advance. You can schedule up to two weeks in advance, sometimes next day if somebody cancels. The primary purpose of this program is to transport the seniors in Southfield to doctor's appointments, grocery stores, dialysis. We also have included in this program grocery shopping on Tuesdays for McDonald Towers and on Wednesday shopping for them as well, and we provide services to Woodridge on Thursdays for shopping. This program itself is for seniors, but we also transport special needs folks. Holly Graves runs some special needs therapeutic programs through our department. We also provide transportation. Some of you have been on the bus when I'm driving for you, when you've gone through to see some of the development in the city and you've requested a bigger vehicle to come through. That's either myself or my drivers. We have nine vehicles in our fleet. Of the nine vehicles, eight of them are SMART vehicles, and they are all wheelchair lift-equipped. We have one vehicle that holds twenty-four passengers, and the rest hold thirteen passengers with one car. Donation of five dollars round trip is the suggested cost for each trip. It actually costs us about seventeen dollars a ride per round trip for transportation. But because of the donors like Beaumont and Providence and CDBG, we've offset the cost of a donation, which is why a five-dollar donation is the requested donation. All of our drivers either have a chauffeur's license or a commercial driver's license. They also receive CPR training and first aid training. We have over a hundred years of experience in our transportation program. We have two dispatchers that work Monday through Friday from eight to two to field all of the calls and create the schedules for the next day of service. Many of our riders are repeat riders. Because we do a lot of dialysis patients, we also do doctor's appointments, like I've said previously. We take over two hundred and fifty rides a week for people to be transported on this program. And I think that's basically it. Do I have any questions?
Mr. Fracassi?
I am looking at the donors.
Yes.
And I see our people being taken to the grocery store and, and, and I'm wondering why, you know, with all their money, they're not contributing to, uh, to the TOS. I mean, you know, at least give them coupons or something to, to, to... The mayor and I were talking about, uh, what is it, Ken, it's about coupons or helping our local businesses and that kind of thing? And, and, you know, it's, it's, it's really, uh, profitable to the businesses that when you drop off a bus with, with seniors in it, they go in and shop, you know, they, they buy and, and, uh, you know, I know who gives and then taking people to that shop, that store pit, one against the other, and, uh, somebody will cough up, sure, same way as the drugstores, you know? And I think that, you're just having TOS and Beaumont, you know, hit up some of the grocery stores.
The grocery shopping that happens Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday is reimbursed through the nonprofit.
Yeah.
They reimburse the wages of the drivers for that program.
Yeah, but I'd still like to hit up some of the grocery stores.
Senior discount.
Well, you know, it's really neat. They go to, you know, they're, they're bona fide customer, you know, they're gonna be there every week. You know, it's not like you and I, we may not go there on a regular basis, but when the bus comes, we gotta get off and go to that store and get it, same store all the time. They're benefiting.
Medical appointments and dropping people off, picking them up, how's, how does that get arranged? 'Cause I know whenever I go to the doctor, I won't, I won't, I always get stuck there. So I'm assuming you have somebody just waiting around?
No, no, no. We arrange a window of time. So if your appointment is at ten o'clock, we'll pick you up anywhere between eight and nine-thirty to get you to your appointment, and then we give you a two-hour window at least when we pick you up. The seniors are very savvy. They know what to schedule and when. They'll call us first and ask which day is open before they call their doctor's office. It's a interesting dynamic. They do very well with this transportation program. They do very well with this transportation program.
Mayor?
Just a quick question. Nicole, one time you were short drivers, is that still the case?
No.
You say you had nine drivers?
No, we have nine vehicles.
Oh, nine vehicles. How many drivers do you have?
We currently have roughly seven that all rotate. They're all part-time. Two of them very rarely work. They're as needed when we call them in to cover other people's schedules.
No. Do you only pick up at McDonald Towers and Woodridge?
That's an arrangement that went way back to when, before I started here. That is the only complex that didn't have a bus at the time. I'm pretty sure they purchased a bus now, but they still utilize our services. And we're open to transporting other facilities, but most of them have their own vehicles to do that.
Do they have... Does it have to be a group facility? Would you go to an individual's home, Victor?
We do go to individual homes for this service, yes.
Questions? Any other questions? All right. You're not asking for immediate need to ask?
No, we have the September 26th.
Pardon?
Yeah, I need to explain that to you. SMART runs on a fiscal year like we do. The difference is they just gave us everything in July. They run late with their contracts because they're waiting to hear from the state on how much money they'll be getting.
Do we... Is... TOS under our municipal insurance?
Yes.
So any problems that we've been covering?
We had one. We actually had a client, bus rider, and it went through the MMRMA, through the program just as if it had been a city vehicle. Because we have to indemnify them, the SMART, because really the vehicle is being offered under our control, so.
No, is this a cash transaction?
No, we give them an envelope. They can give us cash or a check. They put in the envelope, seal the envelope, give it back to the driver. The driver brings it in at the end of the day and puts it in the drop safe.
Are there any loopholes within the program?
Are you asking me if we trust our drivers?
Yeah, that's a way to put it.
Some people don't pay. Some people just give back the envelope sealed because they can't afford $5.
There's quite a bit of that.
There is a lot of that. We can't deny service because we provide them with CDBG money, gives us money for the program, so we can't deny service. And I don't think we would want to. Most people are pretty fair about it. If they can afford it, they pay the $5. We do get a few people who are so funny, they'll call and they're really nervous about that $5 and, you know, budgets are stretched, people have a hard time. And if it's the only way to the doctor, you know, my dispatchers are great about it. They are very calming and they'll say, if you can't afford it, don't worry about it. You know, it's just part of the program.
And from that point on, they never worry about it. Since Brightwell?
What is your radius?
Our radius is eight mile to the south, 14 to the north, Middle Belt to the west, and...
Middle Belt? Yes, sir.
Wait, you're all throwing me out. It's late. It's late. It's on the, it's in here. We have a catchment area. We run within the city limits. So Middle Belt to the west, Coolidge to the east. Because there are some Providence and Beaumont facilities that run along those corridors.
All right. It'll be on our next regular meeting schedule.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Parking license agreement between the City of Southfield and 5000 Town Center.
Mr. President, I'm requesting that Council, I find this meeting at the September 26th. The 5000 Town Center Association has approached the city about utilizing the parking directly north of the city on parcel we discussed earlier, where the E to the B functions are held for parking. They are making repairs to their parking structure starting in October of this year. We've done this in the past. I'm requesting authority that I can sign this contract on behalf of the city.
That's a pretty long, well, pretty long hike for folks to walk from 5000 Town Center.
It's right across the street.
But it's, you say it's north of where E to the B is?
No, it's actually north of their property and the lot is where...
Oh, I thought it was, I misunderstood you. That it was north of E to the B there was the...
Is there insurance needed for that?
Yeah, we cover all that in the agreement. They have to indemnify us and provide insurance. And so we've done this a few times, you know, several years ago. There's no fee. We've never established a fee, but we do try to cover, you know, the city, obviously, live though.
I just like to get my buddy over there.
Do you get a signed statement that if we allow this to happen, they can't have any more complaints about what we do?
Maybe that's why they're complaining, they're losing their parking, their auxiliary parking.
Oh, by what goes on?
By what goes on, yeah.
Okay, that'll be on our next...
Can I ask for a Rule 10 on that so we can... Since we're going to start this October 1st, we're up against the calendar here. We'd like to get the contract finalized with the vendor too. I mean, is there a reason for postponing the decision until Monday? We have a move. We have a motion.
Yeah, we'll rule Chandler, we'll get it up the docket.
It's been moved by Mr. Fracassi, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we find an immediate need to act to provide parking for the 5000 Town Center, 5000 at Town Center Association during the reconstruction of their parking facilities. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Carrie, now we need to...
Mr. Chairman, I move that the city attorney through a contract with 5000 Town Center for parking on the front way.
We had the recommendation that Mr. Zorn execute on behalf of the city.
On behalf of the city's support.
It's been moved by Mr. Fracassi, supported by Mr. Cruz, that a contract be written and Mr. Zorn be authorized to sign for the city for this parking for 5000 Town Center. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? It is carried.
Thank you.
You owe me one.
We let you park over there. Will you let Myron park over there on your lot now?
Anytime. We can get the buses to...
Yeah, we can get SMART bus to get them over here.
All right, we need to schedule a committee of the, committed a whole meeting for Monday, September 26th at 5:30 PM.
Who do we need? Senator Ken?
Yes.
I'll move a 10 supporter.
It's been moved by Mr. Fracassi and supported by Mr. Cruz, that we find an immediate need to act on scheduling the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, we move to schedule a regular meeting conducted as a committee of the whole for Monday, September 26th at 5:30.
It's been moved by Mr. Fracassi, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we schedule a regular meeting conducted as a committee of the whole for Monday, September 26th at 5:30 PM. Everybody prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? It is carried.
I have a question.
Yes.
Last week, we also moved the meeting time. We moved the meeting time, but we never voted on it, but we had the request from Council President to permit. And now we're...
We're just checking to see if you're paying attention. We do have...
Mr. President?
Yes.
Discussed another meeting date this afternoon.
Oh.
October 13th.
Yes. I need a consensus around the table to meet with Lathrop Village, City Council on October the 3rd.
Are you going to accept that meeting?
Well, I need a consensus around the table to find out if people are okay with it. Then we can go up.
Okay.
Yeah.
What is the meeting schedule?
They want to meet with us on...
How many meetings? The council?
There's only two meetings on that one.
There's only two.
But that's Russia, isn't that Russia China?
It is. So I will not be able to attend.
Yeah, the reason we didn't schedule it for that date, I don't know on the Lathrop Village side of that.
Okay. Okay, Ari won't be there. Dan? Ms. Seymour? Mayor? Ms. Morris?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Nancy? Ms. Banks?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a single item, correct?
It is, yes, well...
Two roads.
Yeah, two roads. We're talking about Southfield and Evergreen Road.
And that's going to be held here or in Lathrop?
We'll have to make negotiations on where it's going to be. I don't know tonight.
Well, we have to post it.
Are you scheduling a meeting?
Right, we need to schedule it. Or you could do that on the 26th at the regular meeting.
If I can just add a little clarity. They've asked for the meeting, particularly about Evergreen Road, because that's on the schedule. They want the meeting as soon as possible. This Monday night is available. So we need, you know, if the majority of people can meet, then we need to go to Lathrop and say, here's a Monday night, because that's when they meet. So that's the suggestion.
So do you want to wait in on the 26th on the agenda for, at the regular meeting? If you find from Lathrop that the state works for them, then you could add the meeting?
Yeah. Why don't we do it that way?
Right.
That'll be less cumbersome.
Sure.
Because if we move to have the meeting tonight and then they can't do it, then we'll be meeting with the other side of the table.
They should have worked something out with Michigan Credit Union.
Yes.
Because they allow them to expand in the residential neighborhood. They should be paying for Evergreen Road. Yeah, it should be the deal. Those neighbors were matter of fact, because the petition was wrong.
Are you going to talk to Mayor Barack?
I will if he asks me to.
Will you talk to Mayor Barack? Because he's the one that...
He's talked to both of us about needing this meeting as soon as possible.
Yes. If you want to help me, I can go in.
I'll call him some more.
All right. All right, we have several requests for communication. And the first is Ms. Gerald, if you would give your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. In November of 2015, three of our elected officials stood on the steps of City Hall with the fast food workers. As you can see in this photo, our three elected officials are Myron Fraser, Council President, City Clerk Nancy Banks, and Mayor Ken Cyber. Our elected officials stood with these workers to show support that wages should be increased to $15 per hour and that the workers should have rights to form a union. Mayor Cyber said, "You can't live on the current minimum wage. How can you support a family?" I was a longtime school administrator and I had parents who were working two jobs. It impacts the whole family just to make ends meet. Here's a question. Where's the picture of our elected officials and city administration standing with the employees of Southfield? Here's the picture right here. There is no picture. Our employees have not had a raise or contract since 2008. This administration repeatedly fabricates stories on how they offered our employees a fair wage increase. I'm saying baloney. Our officials feel that fast food workers should get an hourly increase of $6.85 over the current $8.15 hourly wage. I totally agree. I applaud the three elected officials for standing with the workers. But did you ever consider legacy costs for those guys when you were talking about the raise that they should get? Medical insurance contributions? Pensions? Or was this really a post-election photo op? I'm amazed at how you guys can stand with other workers and talk about what they should get, but you can't do that in your house with your employees. Now, I just want to let you know that a new friend of mine, he's the St. Clair Shores City Manager, Mr. Mike Smith. St. Clair Shores just approved a three-year contract with their employees. And he's quoted as saying this, "With the cost of living, we feel that the increase was justified." They gave their union workers a three-year contract and a 5% increase over several years. Now, how is it that a smaller city understands the magnitude of what employees do for their municipality, but Southfield can't? You guys are on this housing agenda and all of this other stuff, but you're not remembering how important the employees are. So think about that and make a decision and make it soon. Settle those darn contracts. Give our people what they deserve and I'll yield the rest of the time for any...
Thank you.
The next person is Mr. Gerard Mullin.
Gerard Mullin, Post Office, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Mr. Chairman, in the past four years, I've asked this council four times, the last time on March 14th, 2016, to move your legal notices from the Southfield Eccentric to the Southfield Sun, the one newspaper that every Southfield resident gets a copy of for free. Whereas the Eccentric was the newspaper that only a few Southfield residents got and had the cost of $1.50 per copy to boot. You folks on council knew that the Sun was the place to be. That is why in the last council general election, six of the eight candidates placed their ads, their political ads in the Sun and not the Eccentric. Not one Southfield council candidate placed one single ad in the Eccentric. And yet, you folks here ignored me and you also ignored your very own city charter as well. You heard me right. The city charter, to be precise, Section 11.8 of the charter, quote, "The council shall annually designate the official newspaper," unquote. Let me repeat that. Quote, "The council shall annually designate the official newspaper," unquote. I don't recall you folks ever doing an annual designation in modern times, therefore violating Section 11.8 of the charter. Section 11.8 was the subject of a lawsuit that was decided by the Michigan State Supreme Court over 50 years ago in which this city lost. Ironically, the newspaper in question at that time was called the Southfield Sun, but it wasn't for free. The takeaway message for now is that this city is required by charter law to annually designate an official newspaper in which this city publishes its legal notices, something that you folks here have failed to do for some time now. Think about it. Check it out, check it out. Section 11.8. You folks here can find a copy of the charter on the city clerk's webpage. Again, check it out, check it out. Thank you.
Okay. Next person that asked for, uh, time for communication is Angel Burgos.
Good evening, councils.
Your name and address for the record.
My name is Angel Burgos. I reside at 23882 Sargent. I'm the owner of the house that where the New Hope Missionary Church is building the parking lot. My concern today is I've been having big issues of what's going on with this parking lot and on my property. I come to find out that with the tree trimmers, that the wall was gonna go around the trees and that the tree wasn't gonna be tear down, torn down. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous today. Second of all, it was, I spoke to the planning department, Mr. Terry Crowe, and he explained to me to talk to Jeff Spence. My wife contacted Spence to see where was the wall going. So he said that he was gonna contact code enforcement for trees, Ms. Irene, I believe her name was, and go out there and mark it. That way we have an idea where the, the wall's gonna go. Well, we come to find out when we got off work that the markers were about like 10 feet in their property, leaving these trees that was on the boundary lines on my property. They decided to tear down eight feet of my fence, private fence in the back, and let it open as of right now. All the openings, there's no barriers. I got kids that bypassed through my yard, going across. There's no, no stopping them because there's nothing there to stop the kids going across. The second thing is, I mean, I'm sorry, the third thing, is when I spoke to the planning department, it's like, "Well, there's no trenching because the trees, the roots, you can't tear up the roots, you're gonna kill the trees." Well, there's at least 10 to 15 trees that were torn down to build this parking lot. And now all of a sudden, this one tree is, is a big problem. And I'd like said to the code enforcement for trees that I always thought that the boundary lines is where we at. This is our parcel. This is what we agreed upon. This is where the wall's supposed to go. And then all of a sudden, we got these changes. Mr. Crowe, he's, he's here today. He probably could explain to you what's going on. It's changing every moment. And we have no idea what's going on no more. We asked for the plans. Well, we don't see the plans no more. Now, Mr. councilman at the time, last year in November, Cyber, said to them, "Hey, why don't you remove these eyesore trees that's in front of the house?" Well, the trees are still up. The fence haven't been maintained. And it's still the same. They were worn many a times. Fix these privacy fence. Let's do something. And it's amusing. It's, it's, it's just to a point now where, but the lot's being built. You got your bulldozers in there, you got your lighting equipment going up, you got everything going up in there other than fixing what they needed to fix with our fence, the walls, and everything else.
Okay, your three minutes are up.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's, that's fine. The question I need to ask you was, was the tree directly on the property line?
Yes.
And the wall was going to go on what side of the tree?
The wall was supposed to be on the boundary.
So it was gonna stop at the tree and start on the other side of the tree?
Their, their thing were to, whatever tree needed to be removed, they were gonna replace whatever tree that was supposed to be taken down. They come to find out that that tree was, well, I'm not saying if it's costly or what, they decided to leave it there. So now they want to go around, but they can't do no trenching because they said that's gonna kill the roots. So there's not gonna be no trenches. And now I come to find out today, I went to measure, they went further out 10 feet into their yard where the wall's gonna be straight this time. And it's, that's being approved by the planning department. And it's, you know, that's, that's gonna be on my property. Once that wall goes up, all these trees and everything, and then I was told by Mr. Spence that, "Oh, don't worry about it. They're gonna take care..." This is what I was told by Mr. Spence was, "They're, they're gonna take care of the property when the wall's up." So that means you gotta go on my property to start taking care of what's between the boundary lines? I, I don't understand that. It's, it's, it's something where I, we had thought that the boundary lines were where the wall's gonna go.
Okay, well, all right. Sounds like it's not anything that we can solve right now, but I understand what your concern is, so.
Was there something we can follow up on?
Yeah, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to follow up on that. You know, if they're going 10 feet in the, inside their own property, then either one of two things. You either got a 10-foot extension on your backyard, or they're gonna have to bring the lawn mowers around on their side of the, on your side of the wall to mow the grass.
Is it okay to speak for, one second? I, I had my software association to see if you could spoke, speak with the city attorney, and I never had, got an answer with that. I'm not sure if they got in contact. No?
Okay.
But I appreciate that, sir. Thank you so much.
Sure thing. All right?
Who's gonna follow us through on that?
I'll give Terry a call to find out what's going on.
Terry's back there.
Oh, Terry's back there? Terry, ring, ring.
I, I do want to respond, but I know our next speaker's gonna talk about the same situation, so I'd rather give her a chance to speak and then I'd be happy to respond.
Okay. The next speaker is Carol Lee Burgess, Burgos.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Carol Lee Liddell Burgos. I reside at 23882 Sargent Avenue, and I own the house next door to the New Hope Missionary State Parking Lot. I come home every day. Right now, all you see is an eyesore. There's nothing but dirt, dust, gate open. They don't maintain their property. They don't maintain the fence. Now, I'm like, how are you gonna make them maintain this new parking lot they're building? They don't keep it up now. And I think we're getting the raw end of the deal. I would prefer the wall right on the boundary line, cut down whatever trees you need to cut down, because they didn't care when they built the parking lot how many trees they were cutting down. So I'm pretty sure they don't care now. Because it looks really bad. It's bringing down the value of the neighborhood and it's, it looks bad. It just looked bad. When you approve, members approve this parking lot, they didn't know what the hell they were doing. Just use my language. Because it's bad. I mean, now I think the city of Southfield know how they feel when they, the oil wells were judged to move that. That's how I feel about the parking lot. You should feel like I feel. You wanted something bad, I wanted something bad. And we both lost. So now all we can do is move forward and improve on what we have left. So please, do something about the parking lot. Make it look good. Put the wall up. Put some landscaping. And please, put the fence back up where people can't come in my yard. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person that is asked for, uh...
I can wait after the next speaker.
Oh, yeah, Terry? I'm sorry.
So I just wanna revisit a little bit. I do not believe the Burgos own the property, the subject property that they're talking about.
Yeah, we do.
You, you own it now.
Yes, we do, yes.
But you didn't own it at the time this plan was approved. That's neither here or there. But I wanted to clarify that they've recently acquired this parcel. They don't live at this parcel. They are landlords there. I believe you live two, two houses down, correct?
Next door to them.
Okay.
We're not landlords though.
Okay. But when, when this was approved, if you recall, the concerns and it was even brought up about your little piece of, you know, having these lots was the preservation of the trees, that the maturity of the trees was paramount. And the plan that was approved clearly says that the final location of the wall would be field verified at the time to preserve the trees. One of the trees in question is a 42-inch maple that's right on the line. It's, it's an extensively large tree and there's a half a dozen other large trees. So our, our staff, Mr. Spence and Ms. Lusk, have been out there several times coordinating with the contractor on the actual location of the wall to preserve as many trees as possible. So this request is a recent request now to remove those trees. And at one time, the, the thought was maybe we could jog the wall around the trees to preserve the trees and still maintain the screening. What's been decided as of just last week is to actually move the wall inside 10 feet of the property line, therefore giving the church ample space to come in and maintain that space between the trees and where the wall is. That still has to be field verified based on a survey and staking that my, my staff will sign off on before the final location of the wall. The, always was the preservation, try to preserve, preserve the character of the neighborhood by preserving as many trees as possible, and especially this 42-inch tree, which is mostly on the, the church's property. And footings and trenching of a wall would destroy the root system and thereby kill most of these large mature trees. My staff is trying to coordinate with the developer, the contractor, and respect what the wishes of, of the neighbors were at the time this thing was approved. I spoke with Mr. Spence this afternoon just to verify where we are. They're still waiting to go out after the final staking has been done, and then that will determine where the actual location of the wall is. And Angel is correct. The wall has been moved further to the east so that there's ample space to protect the trees and also get access to maintain.
East, north?
No, east.
It's the one coming that way.
The wall, the wall will be moved east of their property line. So the, the wall runs north-south.
Pardon?
On whose property? The church's?
It's on the church's property. So it's, it's being, it's being brought in 10 feet.
Pardon?
10 feet.
It's, it's everybody knows lots, right?
The counseling house.
The ones on Sargent that were...
So if I could...
I mean, Sargent runs east and west.
Okay. This, this is Sargent. Okay? And here's the church. The parking lot is here. And here's the property line.
Oh. I was thinking that...
And then this is the, where the fence is. This wall was going to be built to tie into the back of the counseling center and then straight down to connect.
Okay.
But there's a 42-inch tree here and there's a couple other healthy trees. So the thought was that somehow this was gonna jog in and out to protect these trees, which, which would limit the ability of the church to properly maintain their property without accessing the private develop, um, private owner. The previous owner, we tried to work out an easement agreement so that we would have access to go on their property. And with our tree fund, I was willing to plant some evergreen trees to screen, to screen the wall. But, but they weren't interested in doing that. And, and the Burgos, if I'm pronouncing that right, have, have acquired the property since then. But the, the plan that was approved by council always said that the actual location of the wall would be field verified by our staff to preserve the trees. So instead of creating this jog, what they are now going to do is tie into the back of the counseling center and have a straight wall. And that would provide 10 feet, approximately 10 feet from where the property line is to where this wall is so that they have proper access to maintain the property. And the gate, the gate would be located somewhere in this location so that as they're, they're cleaning up their lot, they have access from here onto this 10-foot strip. That's the latest plan. That still has to be verified with, with proper surveying so we know exactly where the property line is. And then the wall would be offset to preserve the trees. So it hasn't been finalized yet, but, but that's, that's what's, that's what's being discussed right now.
So the, the tree line is above 10 feet from the back of the, the house, from the side of the house?
Uh, to the west of the house.
Yeah.
That's where the property line is and that's where the trees are located. So they're, they're not encroaching on, on the private property and it provides adequate, adequate space for them to come in and maintain their property.
What's gonna stop them from going on our property? What barrier is gonna be there? Do we have to put up a fence?
Well, we, again, they, it can be properly staked where, where the line is, where between your line and where the church is.
What's gonna stop them from going on my property? What barrier would that, gonna be in the west of that 10 feet?
Well, if they're gonna, if they're gonna maintain that piece of property in there, they have to come. They have to.
No, they, no, no, they...
How are they gonna?
With all due respect, there's 10 feet between where the wall is and where their property line is. So they're, they're actually pulling the wall off of their property line so they have adequate space to get in and maintain their 10-foot buffer.
They've got 10 feet all the way to Sargent Street.
All the way to Sargent, from Sargent all the way up to the, there. And they're gonna create a gate or an entrance in the wall closest to the counseling center so that they don't have to encroach on private property.
How are they gonna do that if there's no barrier there? The wall is 10 feet on their property.
That's correct.
You have a 10-foot space between my property and their property.
So you gotta create a bowling alley.
What is going to be there to stop them from going beyond that 10 feet west?
We're in line with the trees. I don't have a, I don't have a border between my, my front yard and my neighbor's front yard.
That's you.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to explain, but there are...
I can't explain.
There's, there's a corner mark. There's corner marks from the front to the back. And that, that's gonna be staked out.
It, it sounds to me, and I'm just going by the, the diagram you have there, that you have to put two walls in. If, if they don't want anybody on their, their property, you have to put two walls in.
No, there's one.
Or fence, pardon?
What's gonna be in the west of it? That's what the, the western of the wall.
There's a, there's a tree line that looks like there's... There's about nine to 10 trees right on the property line.
So if you put a fence, you have the same issue.
I understand.
Yeah.
But, but the argument is, what's gonna keep them off my property?
Right.
Nothing is gonna keep them off the property once they get on the other side of the fence.
Well, the tree, the tree line is, is...
But it's not, it's not solid.
Of course it's not solid. The whole purpose was to try to preserve those trees. That was the purpose with this...
Apparently there are two issues now. One is preserve the trees, keep them off my property. In order, in order, in order to satisfy issue number two, then you've gotta either put up a fence or some other barrier. So this becomes a bowling alley between the counseling center and Sargent.
You would, you'd be creating that by putting a second fence up.
Pardon me?
You would be creating a bowling alley effect by putting a second fence up.
That's only, that's the only assurance that you can say is, if we put up another fence, then nobody can get on your property unless they climb over the fence.
I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to meet the spirit of what was approved and respect the trees. And it's not finalized yet because it has to be staked. Well, it is. And, and ownership has changed and what was negotiated has changed. You know, we, we tried to get an easement from the previous owner who was willing to plant some trees there. But ultimately, if you recall, the, the thrust of the neighborhood was the, the loss of the trees, the loss of their pastoral environment, and, and I respect that.
Sure.
And that's what was ultimately the reason it was approved the way it was.
It wasn't approved that way.
Let me ask the Burgos a question. What do you consider a solution?
My solution, sir, the best solution was if the church was gonna build this parking lot in which they already have it, build a wall straight forward on the boundary line.
And, and remove all the trees?
And remove two trees. The other two trees are on my property. There's only two trees, sir, that's blocking this wall from being built. One tree was that 40-some inch tree and then there's a small skinny tree right next to it. Everything else is on the church property. There's other trees, but they're on my side and will not affect the wall.
I have 10 trees identified in the survey.
Yes.
Right on the boundary lines that appear to be on the church's line. And you start trenching a wall in, whether you take the tree down itself or you just cut through the root zone of those trees, you're, you're gonna kill those trees.
Sure. Sure.
And then in any event.
What's a canopy, what size is a canopy of that forty-two inch?
If it if it's a forty-two inch diameter at five feet breast height, I would say it's it's probably sixty. Probably sixty feet in diameter.
Okay, so the root the root line is, or the the root system goes all the way to the drip the drip line.
It does.
And so anything inside of that drip line is probably gonna jeopardize the the life of the tree.
The larger stems of the tree are gonna be closer to the to the tree.
Yes.
In in any event, as you stated in the beginning, we can't solve everything tonight. I wanted to at least explain where we are. And, you know, we we can revisit this. I'm relying on my experts who are tree experts on staff and what was approved. And if we if we, you know, can can get something that meets the spirit of what was approved and satisfies them, ultimately that's the goal that we'll try to get to. But we can't, I don't, I don't think it's it's fair and reasonable to start dictating different terms and having healthy trees removed just for the sake of happy trees removed. I would much rather look for a solution that protects protects the trespassing issue and still preserve the trees if it if it's reasonable and feasible.
I I would too. I mean, that's that sounds like the better of the solutions that I've heard tonight. Now, can it, can that happen?
Again, I I'll have to, I'd like to meet with the city attorney about what was approved and what what we can and can't do after the fact. And I don't think we have all the answers tonight.
Yeah, well, the fact that that's what was approved doesn't mean that it was, it's in concrete and we threw away the the trowel.
And again, I don't wanna get into the fact that these guys have gone out to bid, they've gotten cost estimates, they have timing. We are making sure they are complying with our our ordinance requirements. And so, um, it it's just, it just, it's difficult to to have all the answers tonight. I I wanted to be as prepared as I could because I saw them on on the agenda. And I anticipated these questions. But, you know, we are still waiting for the final staking so that we can verify where the property is is correctly located between the trees. Mr. Spence did put some preliminary stakes in the ground about where he thought the wall should be moved to protect the tree zone and and meet the intent of the ordinance, but nothing's been finalized yet. And we anticipate within the next week, he called back out there.
Do you wanna have a report back? We're gonna do the COW at five-thirty on next Monday?
Yeah, that would be.
And that way we could examine this a little more.
Where where are we at at that point?
At that point?
Yeah.
What's that mean?
Let me let me ask a question. Obviously, I wasn't, I wasn't around when this was approved, but what what's the possibility of putting this, you know, obviously sort of, you know, the the big trespass issue? Just put a section of fence wherever up to the tree and then another part of the fence. There's just a section of fence.
Okay, all right, so again, we're gonna, you know, you know, we start tinkering with with plumbing.
Well, I'm not, this is.
Well, I would explain though. Well, it's not a simple answer because it was the fact that there was a wooden fence, a privacy fence, that was originally installed along the north and south property line that the neighbors didn't feel was was being adequately maintained. And they insisted on a masonry wall. Because, uh, if I was if I was a neighbor, and this is what I argued at the time, I would want an attractive decorative fence that's more residential in character. But it was hammered on us, they wanted a masonry wall, and, you know, we had to find a balance between acquiring the masonry wall and preserving as many trees as possible. And then and then I know the neighbors, they desired that the existing residential fence that was previously approved be torn down and the masonry wall be put between the north and south property. So we went round and round on this issue and many other, you know, contingencies to try to come up with a solution at the time that not everybody was happy with. But it passed.
All right. Okay, that's, I'm assuming that what the attorney says.
So let's see what we can work out in the next week and.
I've related to this. And this was on the council agenda on March twenty-third, two thousand fifty. One of the things I pointed out was the number of trees that, you know, you talk about saving trees. There are trees that, pine trees, especially towards the front of the property that are dead or barely alive. They're just a little out the crown and all this dead boughs under underneath. And it's an eyesore. And I was hoping that when trees were removed for this fence that this would be addressed. Even so, it's not, the fence starts beyond the, to the rear of the house and these trees are farther up. But it's an appearance issue. And when Reverend Roberson was before council, I asked him that, or requested of him, that they get these trees trimmed. That has not happened. And I walked the property, what, two weeks ago, Angel?
Yes.
Came over at your request. And he doesn't want, uh, yeah, you know, he wants us to respect his property line. And the woman that owned that house was elderly and sick and deeded it over to the Burgos. So it's his his property, he's not renting it. It's his property now.
Well, through the chair, my staff and Miss Lusk has pointed out the dead trees and that they're they're gonna be compelled to remove any dead or diseased trees per our ordinance. But when the when the activities began, and I believe you contacted our office, we basically put a stop work order on them to make sure that we got all this stuff figured out right before they did any more removals. And they were compelled to remove whatever trees that had already been removed and clean up the site, but not to remove any more trees until we had this issue resolved. So it was based on citizen resident complaints to our office that we contacted the contractor and contacted the church and said, cease and desist any new additional work until we have this resolved. And we're still in that resolution period. And that was all tied in with the survey. So mayor, I I know my my staff has put them on notice and we will enforce any dead or diseased trees to be removed, whether or not they were on this plan or not, that has been brought to their attention.
But work is being done, Steve.
They were allowed to continue on the parking lot but to remove no more trees or to do anything else along the property line until it was staked and surveyed and field verified by my staff.
Has it been surveyed?
No, that's what we're still waiting on.
Okay, but you said that Jeff was.
Jeff put some, he went out, he went out.
Was he guessing at the?
Yes, and that's why I said, he put he put some preliminary flags in the ground that he felt was adequate distance away from the trees. That's where the ten feet came from. That has not been finalized yet. And we were waiting on their survey marks to verify where the corners of the property were and to do the final staking before any wall trenching was done. So that's where we are. And and that's why it's a little premature at this point. I was trying to get as on-time, real-time information to be able to respond. But nothing's been finally approved and this is some of the challenges that we're trying to deal with with the way it was originally approved by council.
Okay.
And I will get as much information and report back to you next Monday. And I do wanna have a conversation with the city attorney about what our options are.
Okay. Looking forward to it with Bader. The next person that asked for time to communicate is Mr. Fred Bunker.
He's not here.
If he's not here. Is there any other item that, Mr. Breckwell?
Just for your last, and we, that I'll ask council meeting, there was an issue about bedbugs. And I made a statement about, perhaps we could put something in the newsletter, about employee newsletter, you know, respecting the fact that bedbugs are typically transported from home. And and a residence in the yellow-upset, I was pinpointing employee. I wanna make sure that 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 applies to employees, non-employees, to anybody who works in in this city, uh, who visits the city home. So if anything is ever printed in the employee newsletter, it will be considered representative of everyone who visits the building and or work here as a career employee or a non-직업 employee. So that's my.
Can you pass that on to Mr. Manion?
Uh, I will, I can, well.
You can't talk to Michael Manion?
Oh, I can, yeah, I I didn't wanna make it, but I was, I was.
Mrs. Aaron carries Mark Wain.
I know. I saw Mr. Floyd taking notes, I was, uh, look care of that, uh, that fence forward.
Okay.
Yep, that's it.
Anyone else, Mr. Babelman?
Last week, Nancy and I were talking about the meeting agendas and things like that, trying to be environmentally friendly as well as a little tech savvy. And we were wondering if there's any one on council who would like to test or pilot some going paperless initiatives with our agendas and minutes, just because a lot of it just gets reused, we change the date, things like that, and it may make things easier, save the environment, paper, donor costs. But I'm willing to work with Nancy and then anyone else on the council who would like to at least, uh, test or try to implement some go-green, paperless initiatives.
Well, we either all have to do it or we aren't gonna do it at all. So we can't halfway do it. I mean, it's it's okay if you wanna do a test, but if you, if you, you decide. And Nancy's been asking us to go paperless for, uh, before she had gray hair.
I'm streaking.
Only her hairdresser knows for sure.
Thanks, Mike. Another compliment return.
But she has been asking us, or suggesting that we go paperless for a long time. And frankly, we've sort of dragged our feet because people sitting around this table are nearly as tech savvy as they, as we all should be in order to go paperless. It's like harvesting a resource with a hoover, you know.
Yeah, and I know, for example, for me, last week I had, I have, I have my computer and I've been, you know, following along either through my computer or the, but, you know, even last week we were talking about the different site plans and the different developments that were going on. It's a lot easier to, I was, for me, I was able to, you know, go to Google Maps, for instance, bring up the property and get a better sense of what's in the surrounding area, what the property actually looks like besides some, you know, colored posters.
But that's what I said. Some folks are very tech savvy and others aren't. Some, maybe we all need to go to a computer class to to get us more up to speed with what we wanna do. I mean, it's the way of the world. But I don't think we're all there yet, so. If you wanna, if you wanna tell Nancy not to send your baggage to your house and you wanna just do it on the on the computer, be my guest.
How do you, how do you keep your papers?
Depends what it is.
Put them on a disk.
So most of it is already stored online on on the city server. All the, all the agendas, all the minutes, everything's already there.
But if your computer goes, you lose it.
No, you don't. Because it's on the, it's, uh, it's not on the, it's on the city's side website. So you just go to the city's website and you can download the information. That you need or get it on.
Past minutes, past council meetings.
It's just, you know, when I, and I I very much hate paper for the most part. Some things I agree we need, we need paper. But when we have our our COW meetings and then we get the regular packet and most of the information that was discussed in COW is the same paper just with the date change, to me it just seems a little bit of a waste. Agenda staff and, yeah, agenda staff and saying both of those.
I I just, I, I just set this stuff aside and, as far as my concern, I mean, but I don't like to read online. And I have a, I have a difficult time keeping, keeping attention to it. I just don't. I get so much stuff online, papers and everything else. But sometimes I just like to get get my, my pen and underline things and and make notes on it and things like that. And I mean, just like today, where I got notes all over my my minutes and things. The things that I think could really be saving is is getting diagram planning commissions stacked. I mean, that, that to me, I don't mind it because I just go through that and read it. You know, I don't make notes on it. I just retain what is said or make notes on my own paper as to what the planning department says or the planning commission says. Yeah, I'd like to retain for the next meeting.
And there are programs on on the computer where you can actually write on the computer with notes, save them for yourself.
Depending on what model of computer you have and.
Correct.
Issue.
I I guess I don't spend, you know, I, I'm the guy that, you know, if I need a nail within the wall, I get a hammer. And and I don't wanna sit behind a computer all day long. Wife does it and and, you know, it's, the kids do it. And I do it to a certain point in the morning. I put in probably two hours in the morning on the computer, get everything that's coming at me. But to sit on a computer and read all these things, I I just don't enjoy it. It's just like newspapers. I get paper online, read two newspapers and I even get frustrated with that, you know. It's not that I can't read it, it's just that sometimes there's art in there. I like to, I like to save and cut it out, give it to friends. And I mean, it's just, it's just, it's habit more than anything, I guess, but. But I mean, I get piles of cut-out things, you know. But it's, it's development and and when it's, you know, different categories and I've got, you know, my box is all printed, I go, just like city center. I mean, what do I do if I had all this, which I retain? And I'm not a dad, but I use it in my business to to refresh my memory and look through it, make notes in it.
Right, that's why I said, you know, there, there's just an idea that I was throwing out.
Yeah, and part of it is already, I mean, I don't mind it if, you know, to a certain degree, I mean, but I'd have to put everything out.
Yeah, yeah, make your copies, I wouldn't throw them in.
Yeah, I'd turn it out myself and leave it on the desk when I get a minute and do a page. You know, I mean, I guess I'm on the run mostly, Kate. And I guess that's what my job is.
Even better if you have it on my computer, you don't have to fix standards.
I don't, you know, I like to sit on the, sit by the computer. I mean, I just, it's for, you know, I don't, it's not, it's not, I'm the techn, the technology. I just, it's just that.
You're not used to it.
No, I'm I'm used to doing things that way when I have things that I wanna retain at the time when I go to a meeting as opposed to, I don't take a, I don't take a iPad with me to meetings, I took the iPads, you know. The company wanted to get me a iPad and I said, you know, what do I do with it? Everybody sits there with this thing in front of them. And I guess that's fine, you know, but, you know, and you leave. And sure, you got it on on the computer, but I don't, I don't know, I just get the habit. I mean, everyone, Fred likes computers, you know, but he's up, he's on paperless. Far from it. He is, he is my Fred suit. So so it just depends on, on, I guess, habit. And, you know, my wife shifts the opposite, she like to, you know, but she's online and getting all that stuff from her business and, and. I don't know, I don't have a prone kind, I mean, if ever, if if my office says to me, you're on, you're, you're on the computer, get to the top with the, save your newspapers, I'd have to do it. But something that I just. But it's something that I just, I like to sit and read a newspaper. I can't, you know, you get, you get, you get the news in free press. You get it, I get it, was it Thursday, Friday?
Sunday.
Sunday. And, and, and I enjoy those days better because if I want to read a couple of pages, I, I put the paper away or a section, I put it away. And I probably got two or three different parts of newspapers on my desk at home that I want to get back to. Notice like, today I just pulled out, you know, Detroit's oldest bookstore is closing. You know, I mean, to me, I enjoy books and I enjoy reading about it. And I did have a chance to, to read it. So I pulled it out of the paper, that two or three pages and put it aside. And I packed it. I mean, that's... I get, I get... I'm just getting half hour.
That's right.
I'm getting half hour because I want to see you guys say it. I mean, you've got this whole thing done in ten minutes.
Meeting is six o'clock. I just, I didn't realize it was five thirty.
To what?
The meeting on the twenty-sixth. Is there, is there reason why we schedule it at five-thirty? Can we move it at six?
Well, the only reason we had, because I had a closed session and I know there's a couple of other items that also wanted to, that was the only reason.
It's gonna, I'm not gonna be, it's gonna be difficult to communicate here at five-thirty on that day. Can we move it to six?
Well, I mean, we'll, we'll just, yeah, we'll just...
Now we have to do another rule ten.
We have another item to approve tonight.
Pardon?
Yeah, Senate bill.
Oh, we have, yeah.
Sue, will there be enough time or no?
Well, we'll just make it work. I mean, I don't remember, so one of the issues now is the Terry issue. There also may be an AT&amp;T IT issue from, from tech services. And then I need a closed session on pending litigation. So we'll just, we'll just move through it. I mean, we'll do the best we can.
Mr. Chair, I told you, if you have a quorum, you know, that's, that's the process. If you have a quorum, maybe those will...
Yeah, I mean, that is the basis for an official meeting.
Right.
Is to have quorum. I don't, I don't like to leave anybody behind, but...
Right.
And we do have a, oh, he's gone now. We did have a representative from AT&amp;T in a room tonight. I just wondered if he was here to...
Yeah, he's been up a hundred times.
Oh, Jones.
Robert Jones.
Oh, on the, on the cable side too. You heard, not, not the telephone side.
No. Oh, he's, he's a committee manager.
Okay.
I, I, I think that the wishes of a council person should take, but they can't make it. I think that it's hard. It's difficult to, it's difficult, you know, when you have children and all that and obligations to give your, your... But I mean, I can do anything. I'm, I am flexible.
I'm pretty stiff.
But then what do you do about the October third date that we want to be with Lake Village where I can't make it?
Who can't make it?
I can't.
And who cares?
Long, long we got.
Then we should set a date.
I made that comment more about asking for a little consideration. Because five-thirty is, is hard. I'm a parent, I have to fix dinner. It's just a lot going on and have meetings on, that they're supposed to be scheduled for seven. Now they're scheduled for five-thirty.
Well, yeah, I understand. And we'll do the best we can. Can, can we move it to, to six and, and make it work? We may have to do some double...
And if the worst comes to worst, we just won't start the seventh.
We can have a lot of wasted time.
It's, not now.
I made, I made a motion for rule ten.
Oh, that's right.
It's been moved by Mr. Fercassi and supported by Mr. Cruz. We find an immediate need to act in order to change the starting time of our September the twenty-sixth meeting from five-thirty to six o'clock. But it's only, we're only voting on the immediate need to act. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Move that the meeting is set for six o'clock as opposed to five-thirty.
The committee of the whole meeting.
Committee of the whole meeting.
Support.
Is there any discussion? The only discussion I have is who's bringing, who's bringing the birthday cake?
So whose birthday? Yours or mine?
Oh.
Yours too?
Mine's the first.
Oh, mine's the twenty-sixth.
Oh, yours is on the twenty...
Yeah.
So where have you come in now you can't even go to dinner on your birthday?
Chocolate or white?
End the meeting at time.
We need a vote, we need a vote.
Yeah, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Good carry.
The meeting with Lake Village is what you can't make.
Well, yes, it's the first meeting. I can't make, as of now, I can't make any of the meetings in October because of Jewish holidays.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but, I mean, that's just how it fell out.
Who seconded the motion?
What's the dates?
Who seconded the motion? Not the rule ten, but the motion.
The only, the only thing that's available is the call this day.
Who did the motion?
Well, that's my holiday.
You were there.
It's a holiday.
He moved it.
Ann Arbor wants to do away with it.
Who moved it? Right was seconded.
Mr. Fercassi. I got a, I found a big article about it from the Order of... Commiss, I got...
We have some more business to get to here. We have...
I'd like to change in some of these, if it's a regular meeting. I mean, you know, it's tough to miss a meeting.
Our state rep asked us to vote on a resolution for Senate Bill nine twenty-nine for the liquor.
Is that a rule ten?
Pardon?
Is that a rule ten?
Yeah.
The record opposing Senate Bill nine two-nine in its current form.
In its current form, yes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we move to, we'll do rule ten.
It's been moved by Ms. Morris and supported by Mr. Cruz. That we find the immediate need to act in the, in the matter of voicing our opposition to Senate Bill nine twenty-nine. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is carried. Now I need a motion to, yes.
Move that we, let's say, this would be a resolution.
Yes.
From the council to the opposition of Senate Bill nine twenty-nine in its current form. Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Cruz, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we approve a resolution opposing Senate Bill nine twenty-nine in its current form. Are we prepared to vote? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is carried. Now we need someone to write the resolution.
I thought, I think whoever made the motions. I thought Jeremy said he would provide us with some language. Oh, Jeremy said he would provide us with some language, so...
Put it online so I can read it.
I want to, I want, we'll probably, I want to see if, I would get nervous about the current form. But we're moving the votes to the...
Sure, yes.
Yeah, which seems to be a daily occurrence.
Especially since many of those people that are in the seats didn't have any local experience.
Yeah, well, they just, and it wasn't the, the state legislature, but it was the, the governor's panel that just took power away from Flint.
To sue.
To sue.
Yeah.
They had to get approval from the panel in order to sue.
Sue, it's almost itself.
Yeah.
So, right, they just effectively...
Yeah, you can sue me.
They, they've lost the right to sue now.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't even know how they can do that.
Well, they're, now they'll have to challenge the legal authority for that requirement. So now it's almost a two-step lawsuit.
It's almost, I'm big and you're little, we're another.
That's right, that's right.
We're, do what we want.
That's right.
That sounds familiar.
But sue, sue, any, any other government thing that you have to get their approval to sometimes, to sue them? You can't just jump up and sue? You have to, some kind of way that legal thing...
There's a, there's a court of claims thing. You have to provide notice and so forth. But this is, this was really wholly different. Because prior to this, certainly the city of Flint had the right to initiate a lawsuit. And before they exercised that right, they gave the notice. And now, now they've been deprived of the right to...
Well, they were also exempted themselves from Toyota.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we've been exempt, we've been denied the right to use our property as we see fit.
To zone our property and put our other ordinances, police power ordinances into...
But you know what's really interesting? I scanned the Living magazine. I kind of just go through it and see something interesting. But because of what happened with Flint, I happened to run across a water quality street pages in that Living. And tells the dates in which our water was inspected, tried and, and what finding was as far as lead. I mean, I, funny, it's always been there, but I've never read it. And all of a sudden, it's really interesting when I see the dates, like in two thousand seventeen, of what date should it be tested? And, and if you don't think something is right, you can ask for testing. You know, and what is the lead, the content of the water? I mean, it's kind of interesting. And I never date much of tests, you know?
Is there anything else to come before that, Mr. Brightwell?
Yeah, I hate to do this, but evidently, evidently I must have hurt the feeling of some city employees when I made that statement last time about bringing bedbugs. So, well, I'm, I'm, I'm getting a message from, from on high that I want to apologize to the employees if I, if I hurt their feelings. But our newsletter should, when it comes out, should... I know, I was getting, I was getting a message from on high that I did not apologize. So now I'm apologizing to the employees if they felt bad. And, but the newsletter should say, employees, career employees, non-employees, anybody that comes into the building, if you're bringing bugs, bugs, go back home. So I'm for the poster. I hope, I hope anybody that hurt me...
So you're, you're apologizing, I'm sorry you felt bad about what I said?
Yeah.
Is there anything, Mr. City Administrator? Madam Attorney? Mr. Mandelbaum?
No.
Mr. Brightwell?
I used up all my time.
Ms. Seymour? Uh, Ms. Baines? Mayor? Ms. Morris? Mr. Fercassi?
I moved a, Dan, do a twenty-five page.
Well, just channel with something I'm sorry I bugged you. Mr. Cruz?
I want to know, can we go skycore again during October since it can't be here? Or you can't do that anymore?
No.
I was trying to help you out. I have one quick question. I'll, I'll shut it, even say anything. I have to say tonight. Ready to go. Do we, the RTA, when they were here a while back, they, didn't they, didn't they say they were coming back with some changes to the, to the routes? Or potential changes to the routes that would be more amenable to, to our area? And have we heard from them?
They ended a bus to Nine Mile. I think is what they did. Seriously.
That's not enough.
That was it.
Yeah, no more bus to Eight Mile.
Fercassi, you were right.
He got changed here.
That's not enough.
Better progress.
They need to come back. They need to come back for us to...
There's supposed to be an hearing coming up for anybody who wants to go. We don't know what they're having, who's having it to somebody.
What do they come here for, town hall?
Are you, you know, the new schedule for the one-stop shop? The one-stop, ready, one-stop ready? It just came off, it's starting with October.
The training?
Yeah.
They mentioned that.
Did they?
Yeah, they did.
Okay.
The training.
The one-stop ready? Was it in our bag? Okay. I know, I see it someplace.
It's in October, I know the first one. Yeah.
If there's no more business the time before the council, the meeting is adjourned.